Ron, Ron! Aquel cabito mania, aquel cabito mania, ese suspendo. Please rise for the singing of the national anthem. Please remain standing for a minute of prayer and meditation. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to call the roll of members.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives, Abaya, Abayon, Abeljanosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Acop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincula, Agarau, Agabau, Agnipay Bilyar, Albano, Alcala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantallón, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magcaysay, Aragonés, Arbizon, Arcillas, Arenas, Atienza, Omentado, Bagau, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawil, Batohabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Cristoper, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Vernos, Bertis, Yason, Biliones, Viron, Bolivia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maria Vida, Rosas, Bulut Megtang, Kagas, Kalalang, Calderon, Calistropiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casila, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Seráfica, Ceriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Co, Cowanko, Coliantes, Cortés, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisólogo, Kua, Juarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Tasa, De Jesús, De Venesia, De Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, Del Osario, Del Osomontalia, Divapor Abdullah, Divapor Khalid, Duabit, Durano, Di, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Hermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Giuseppe, Evardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol Pascual, Florendo, Flores, Fortune, Fortuno, Fuente Bella, Garbin, Guendolin, García José Enrique, García Albano, Garin Richard, Garin Xarón, Gasataya, Gachalian, Jerón, Goana Cristina, Go Mike, Gómez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio Dong, González Fernando, Goriseta, Gulyás, Hernández, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halosós, Javier, Co, Conghun, Labat Labat, Lacson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugán, Lasatin, Diateón, Li, Rimgaychón, Lobrigat, López Benhar, López Carlo, López Manuel, Loyola, Mahapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magudadatus Huarto, Magudadatus Zajit, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Martínez, Matugas, Millana, Mendín, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Carlo, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Ovaminal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Portega Pablo, Portega Bininola, Paciao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Pimisas Agabas, Kimbo, Nadasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relámpagos, Revilla, Rowapuno, Robes, Rojamora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Máximo, Román, Romero, Romaldes, Romaldo, Roque, Sackdalan, Segrebarya, Sahadi, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salón, Sambar, Sandopal, Sangkopan, Santos Rekto, Sarmiento César, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabelliano, Seima, Xiao, Silberio, Singzon, Suansing Estrelita, Suansing Horacio, Suárez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Jerni, Tejada, Tebes, Tianco, Ding, Tiño, Tolentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupaz, Di, Omali, Unavia, Unab, Único, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Uy Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Catera, Veloso, Bergara, Villa Fuerte, Villa Nueva, Villarasa Suárez, Villa Rica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Meléseu, Yap Victor, Yu, Samora María Carmen, Samora Ronaldo, Zarate, Subiri.
Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 204 members responded to the call.
With 204 members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a coram. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve Journal Number 4 dated July 30, 2018.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Province of Palawan who are in the gallery today. They are Mayor Mary Jean Inog Jr., Honorable Rodora Racimo, Honorable Federico Dagwat Jr., Honorable Romel Mahinay, Honorable Edmund Sadang, Honorable Dave Kayabo, Honorable Richard Balean, and Honorable Vic Bagona.
Because of Congressman Abreg, Alvarez and Acosta, please rise and welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
May we also greet the guests of the Honorable Alex A. Advincula of the 3rd District of Gavite who are also in the gallery. They are his constituents from Imo City led by Rhoda Miranda.
The guests of Congressman Alex Advincula, please rise to be acknowledged. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
And Mr. Speaker, also in the gallery are the guests of cop not copartilist representatives Sabinyano Kanama and Anthony Bravo. They are from the Digo City National High School Teachers and Employees Multi-Purpose Cooperative namely Rosemary Mige and Merceditas Taruk.
The guests of Congressman Anthony Bravo, please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
And also in the gallery are the guests of Congressman Scott Lanete of Masbate. They are the Sangunian Bayan Renato Kabatingan and Marcel Fontelar of Uson Masbate.
The guests of Congressman Scott Lanete, please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on First Reading as well as communications and committee reports. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Reference of Business Billson First Reading, House Bill 7940, Regulating the Use of Government Ambulances by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 7941, Recognizing National Civic Byways in the Philippines, Creating a National Civic Byways Program by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 7942, Institutionalizing Sustainable Coastal Tourism, Providing Mechanisms for Its Institutionalization by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 7943, Expanding the Coverage of Micro Enterprises as Beneficiaries of the Magna Carta for Micro, Small and Medium Enterprises by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Small Business and Entrepreneurship Development.
House Bill 7944, Providing for the Protection and Conservation of Underwater Cultural Heritage in Philippine Waters by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 7945, Protecting Marine Mammoles and Ensure their Survival and Security Generation Suansing. House Bill 7946, Requiring Restaurants and Food Establishment by Representative Suansing. House Bill 7946, Providing for Study and Core Research by Representative Si Alvarado. House Bill 7948, Establishing a National Center for Economic and Cultural Studies by Representative Si Alvarado. House Bill 7949, Institution of Political Education by Representative Si Alvarado. House Bill 7940, Empowering the Philippine Institute of Traditional and Cultural Health and Estrella. House Bill 7951, Creating International Membership in Paranaque City by Olivares. House Bill 7952, Providing for the Multisation of PNAIDs by Mongawa. House Bill 7953, Converting the International Academy by Naba. House Bill 7954, Supporting Government Order and Safety by Representative Gachalian. House Bill 7955, Creating Varangai Barangkaibang Way by Representative Bergara. House Bill 7956, Amenning Franchise of the Tanda Electric Vehicle Company. House Bill 7957, Providing Compensation to SK of National by Erc. House Bill 7958, Institution of Development by Representative Durano. House Bill 7959, Studying Youth in Anti-Trade Abuse by Si Alvarado. 7960, Promoting Research and Disponia by Si Alvarado. House Bill 7961, Controlling National High School by Gasataya. House Bill Number 7962 and 65 by Representative Gasataya Omali. House Bill 7963 by Representative Gasataya.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 7964 by Representative Gasataya. House Bill 7966 by Representative Go Mike.
To the Committee on Tourism.
Resolution, House Resolution 2019 by Representative Robes.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Resolution 2020 by Representative Vargas. House Resolution 2020 by Representative Vargas. House Resolution 2022 by Representative Vargas. House Resolution 2023, Commanding the West beside State University by Representative Plena. House Resolution 2024, Commanding the Laisse de l'Isso by Silberio. House Resolution 2026 by Representative Menardo Givara by Villa Rica and others.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2027, Leading the Committee on Energy, Ecology by Representative Velasco. House Resolution 2028, Committing Housing and Urban Development by Representative López Mel. House Resolution 2029, Honoring Filipino Teachers by Representative Delmar.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Resolution 2030, Commanding Manny Paciao or Representative Nieto and others. Messages from the President, Message dated 21, Transmitting to the House of Palayung Budget. Budget message for 2019, 2019 National Spenditure Program, Budget Spenditure and Sources of Financing, 2019 Stopping Summary.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Messages from the Senate, Message July 24.
To the Archives.
Message dated July 24 of House Bill 639556. Message July 25.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated July 202018 by Escudero Reco and Aquino. Message dated July 252018 by Senator Sinatelska Levje and Aquino. Message July 252018. Message July 252018.
To the Committee on Rules.
Communications, Communications Letter dated 20 by Eduardo Anjo.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated April 30 by Alan Boromeyo.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
Letter dated May 2 to dated by Francisco Dúquez de Terc. Letter dated May 4 of Deputy Grandpass Mongoyo. Letter dated May 9 of Subanal Sora. Letter dated May 14 by Osterre Panadero.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated May 15 by Bobby Balihao.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated May 16 by Ferdinand Grigl.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated May 16 by Alicia de la Rosa Vala.
To the Committee on Civil Services and Professional Regulations.
Email dated May 23 of Rehina Mora.
To the Committee on Transportation.
Letter dated May 23 of Hernando de León.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Letter dated May 23 by No. Manuel Gustman.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated May 28 2018 by Attorney Mr. Jamel. Letters dated May 27 by Roger Nino.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Letter dated May 28 of Noel Calmes.
To the Committee on Legislative Francises.
Letter dated May 30 by Benjamin Jocno.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated May 30 of Huartito Casillas.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
Letter dated June 1 of Alan Boromeyo.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
Letter dated June 6 of Arnold Patata.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated June 6 of Jesús Quintero.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization.
Letter dated June 7 of Elminho Renzana.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
Letter dated June 11 of Nestor Espenilla.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Letter dated June 22 of Iván de la Fenia. Project Status of the Province of San Boa de la Lote.
To the Committee on Local Government.
Quarterly Financial Report of the LG by Joelven Baal.
To the Committee on Local Government.
Quarter Physical Report of San Boa de la Lote.
To the Committee on Local Government.
Quarter Physical Report of Joel, Josel Baal.
To the Committee on Local Government.
Quarter Financial Report of the Province of Lado del Sur.
To the Committee on Government.
Quarterly Financial Report of the Province of Dabo del Sur.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Annual Audit Report of University of Southeastern Philippines.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Annual Audit Report on the Nueva Ecija University.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Annual Audit Report on the San Boa de la Lote State Political Carries. 2017 Annual Report of the DBM.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
2017 Accommodation Report of the Philippine Republic's Commission. 2017 Annual Report of Bohol One Electric Company.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
2017 Annual Audit Report of the Aurora Central Energy Zone. 2017 Annual Report of the Superclaire Alliance Development. 2017 Annual Report of the Kirin Executive Board. Report on Pungetization. Report on Pand utilization by
To the Committee on Civil Services and Professional Regulation.
Report on Pand utilization of Sanisito
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Report on Pand utilization of
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Report on Pand utilization of
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Report on Pand utilization of
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Report and Supporting Documents of
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Report of Attorney Cesar Pareja
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Penrol Beers. Report of Attorney Cesar Pareja on
To the Archives.
Committee Reports.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 803 and 804 by Higher
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 805 by the Committee on Local
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 806 by the Committee on
To the Committee on Rules.
Additional Reference of Business Resolution, House Concurrent Resolution 19 by Representative Andaya.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker. May we greet the guests of Representative Bollet Banal of the Third District of Quezon City. They are grade 12 students from Miriam College with their teacher, Ms. Anna Maria Teresa Haplos.
The guests of Congressman Bollet Banal, please rise to be acknowledged. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, may we also acknowledge the guests of the Honorable Deputy Speaker Rani Abu of Batangas. They are the Sangunian Kabataan Federation of Bawan, the Second District of Batangas, Headed by Ms. Bernalin Dalang in the SK Federation President.
The guests of Deputy Speaker Rani Abu, please rise to be acknowledged. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, under the calendar of Unfinished Business, I move that we assume consideration of House Bill Number 7735 as contained in Committee Report Number 739 submitted by the Committee on Agriculture and Food. And for this purpose, may I ask that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill. So move, Mister Speaker.
The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
House Bill Number 7735, An Act Replacing the Quantitative Import Restrictions on Rice with Tariffs and Creating the Rice Competitiveness Enhancement Fund.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, the parliamentary status of the bill is that it is in the period of sponsorship and debate. I move that the Chairperson of the Committee on Agriculture and Food, the Honorable Jose Panganiban, be recognized. So move, Mister Speaker.
Congressman Panganiban is hereby recognized. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, as the first interpreter, I move that we recognize the Honorable Ayik Casilaw of Partilist Anak Pawi's.
Congressman Casilaw is hereby recognized.
Maraming salamat, Mister Speaker. First of all, I would like to put on record that I was included in the Committee Report of House Bill 7735 as one of the co-authors. I want to put in record that I withdrew my co-authorship last May 29 officially received by the Office of the Secretary General. For the record, Mister Speaker, distinguished sponsor. Unang-unap po, bago ko po umpisahan ang ating talakayan at ang aking mga katanungan, hingil sa usapin ng panukalang batas na ito na magtatanggal ng kasalukuyang kalakaran ng pagpasok ng bigas sa pamamaraan ng paglagay ng quantitative restriction at bagkos palitan ito sa usapin ng paglalagay ng paripa. Nais ko pong ilatad ang mahabang panahon na kung saan tayo, mga Pilipino, bilang pangunahin kinukonsumo natin and Philippines is a rice-consuming country, 99% of its population ay kumakain po ng bigas sa almusal, sa tanghalian, at tapunan. Being said, rice is the basic staple of the Filipino consuming community. Our rice industry, the existing rice industry has also 2.4 million rice farmers. Ibig sabihin po, dependen ang dalawang million mahigit na mga magsasakan ng palay sa anuman ang kinukonsumo ng kanyang bansa. And hindi lang po ang direktang mga magsasakan ng palay, kundi ang mga manggagawa nito, ibig sabihin mga rice farm workers. Mula sa pagtatanim, pagmimintina, pagharvest hanggang sa post-harvest, eventually hanggang sa mapunta ito sa mga merkado. Dahil nga numero uno itong staple food ng ating mamayan, kinakailangan siguraduhin natin na ang gobyerno at ang kanyang pulisiya ay nararapat pumapabor pangunahin sa interes ng mga magsasakang naglilikha ng mga palay at mga bigas na kinukonsumo natin at ang mamayan na kumukonsumo mura mula sa nilika ng ating mga magsasaka. Mister Speaker, distinguished sponsor. This bill, House Bill 7735, will decide the fate of the 2.4 million direct rice farmers and the more than 1 million rice farm workers. And this bill will decide the fate of the 99% of our populace consuming rice for breakfast, lunch, and dinner. Unang ilalatag ko po ang aking oposisyon sa panukalang batas na ito. Sa panahon ng deliberasyon ng panukalang batas na ito, nairehistro ng kinatawang ito. Una, this bill will take a greater toll and eventually eliminate or even kill the 2.4 million rice farmer's livelihood. Distinguished sponsor, may I know prior to the entry of the Philippine government and a signatory to the World Trade Organization and General Agreements on Tariff on Trade, anong volume po before 1995, anong volume ang inaangkat ng Pilipinas o rice importation?
Mister Speaker, may I answer? In 1995, the total actual imported rice arrivals to the Philippines into the Philippines is 252,000 metric tons.
Total arrival in 1995?
Yes po.
My question, distinguished sponsor, Mister Speaker, prior to the entry of the Philippine government in World Trade Organization GOT, ano ang bilang ng importasyong pumapasok sa ating bansa?
Yun na nga po. 252,953, ah, 252,953 metric tons, Mister Interpretor.
Maraming salamat, distinguished sponsor. Sa pananaliksik po ng kinatawang ito ng at, ng aking opisina, nais ko pong ipaalam ang aking mga kasamahan sa Kongreso. Noong 1991 hanggang 1995, the average imported rice na pumapasok sa ating bansa ay humigit kumulang 93,000 metric tons lamang. Mula noong 1995, noong tayo ay pumasok sa GOT WTO at naipasa itong quantitative restriction, lumaki ng lumaki ang volume na pumapasok dito sa ating bansa. Eventually, from 2008 to 2010, mahigit kumulang 1.3 million metric tons at noong 2008, umabot po ng 2.2 million metric tons ang pumasok. Bumaha ang mga imported na bigas. Now, my basic question, distinguished sponsor. Ang palayan ba natin sa kasalukuyang latad? Kung ikumpara mo noong before 1995 at ang kasalukuyang antas, totoo nga ba na kulang ang pinuproduce ng 2.3 million rice farmers para sa konsumo ng kanyang mamayan? Or kung may datos po ang ating kagalanggalang na sponsor, maari ba nating ibahagi sa ating mga kasamahan sa Kongreso ang comparative production? In the last, let's say, 20 years, kung bakit tumaas ng ganito na umabot sa puntong kinakailangan magimport ng bigas na 1.3 million metric tons, dahil nga ba ito sa kakulangan ng local production? Distinguished sponsor, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, Mister Interpretor. I have here with me data showing the total production of rice from 2008 to 2017. In 2008, the total production is 16, 16.8 million metric tons. In 2009, 16.2 million metric tons. In 2010, 15.7 million metric tons. In 2011, 16.6 million metric tons. In 2012, 18.8 million metric tons. In 2013, 18.4 million metric tons. In 2014, 18.9 million metric tons. In 2015, 18.1 million metric tons. In 2016, 17.6 million metric tons. And in 2017, 19.2 million metric tons. And I would like to also to by way of reply, Mister Chairman, ah, Mister Speaker, that in 2016, the total actual imported rice is 681 metric tons in 2016 and in 2017, 916,000 metric tons. Mister Speaker, distinguished interpreter.
Maraming salamat ako at distinguished sponsor. Ako po'y humihingi ng kopyang yan para sa ating dagdag na impormasyon sa ating mga kasamahan sa Kongreso.
Ako po.
Is the distinguished sponsor will agree with me that upon the enactment of RA 8179, the Foreign Investment Liberalization Act of 1991, eventually downgraded the function of the National Food Authority? Nang tinanggal po ang iilang mga mahalagang function ng National Food Authority o kanyang mandato na kontrolin ang presyo ng palay at bigas. Dahil nga in compliance with our entry to the 1995 General Agreement on Tariffs and Trade and World Trade Organization, the Structural Adjustment Program should harmonize in the full liberalization as mandated in Republic Act 8179. Sa tingin po ba ng ating kagalanggalang na sponsor, malaking kawalan sa bahagi at ahensya ng National Food Authority na matanggalan ang isa sa mahalagang mandato niya sa usapin ng pagkontrol, strict monitoring on the prices of palay and bigas locally produced?
Pagdating, pagdating po sa mandato o structural change na sinasabi po ng ating kagalanggalang na interpreter, hindi namang po malaking kawalan sa NFA because as it is, control pa rin, ang, ang NFA pa rin ang nagko-kontrol ng presyo ng mga bigas na pumapasok sa NFA. Pagdating namang po sa production, of course, ang tanging nagagawa lamang po ng NFA ay 'yung magkaroon ng support buying price na galing po sa magsasaka.
Maraming salamat. One of the arguments when this bill was deliberated in the Committee Level, ang parati pong binabandera na pangkumbinsi sa ating mamayan. Kapag inaprubahan po ang panukalang batas na ito, House Bill 7735 and replace the quantitative restriction to tarification, may malayang kompetisyon which eventually will result to lower prices of rice, especially the imported ones. Distinguished sponsor, please enlighten this representation and our colleagues. Ano ba ang ibidensya at maaring ilatag ngayon na magiging batayan na bababa ang presyo? For the record, dahil nandito namang ang ating mga kasamahan sa Kongreso na mag-aapruba nito. Pakikinggan natin si distinguished sponsor, ano ang magiging rason at kadahilanan na sasabihin niyang bababa ang presyo kapag ito ay naaprubahan?
Mister Speaker, distinguished interpreter. Ayon po sa datos na galing mismo sa National Food Authority, ang presyo po ng bigas na imported, the landed cost of an imported rice is 27 pesos per kilo. Ang ibig mong sabihin nun, kapag po nagangkat po tayo ng bigas, eh, ang presyo po ng bigas, ng isang kilong bigas ay 27 pesos lamang. Samantalang, pag po tayo nagproduz po ng bigas, ang initial na production po kasi po natin ng palay is 13 pesos per kilo. Bago po maging bigas ang palay, marami pong prosesong pagdadaanan ito at nagiging presyo po ng bigas. Pagdating po sa merkado, ay 'yung commercial rice po, at least 37 hanggang 38 pesos. Kaya malaki po ang kaibahan. Bali 10 pisong, 10 piso po ang depresya ng local commercial rice natin kesa sa bigas na inaangkat natin magmula sa ibang bansa. Kaya po, kapag po nagangkat po tayo ng bigas, sigurado po nababa ang presyo ng bigas sa merkado dahil mas mura nga po ang imported na bigas kesa sa local na bigas po natin.
I, I cannot the sentiment of the reply of the distinguished sponsor. While it is factual, ngayon nga may presyo nga 38. Pero po sa kaalaman ng ating distinguished sponsor, Mister Speaker, may tatlong yugto na po mula noong pumasok tayo sa GOT WTO. There are 12 three eras in monitoring the prices of imported and the local in monitoring the prices of imported and the local rice produce or the local palay produce. May tatlong incidente po na pag-spike at pagtaas ng presyo. Mula po sa thirteen pesos per kilo before the 1995, ang regular meal rice, ngayon umaabot na po ngayon sa thirty-eight. Gaya ng sinabi ng ating kagalanggalang na sponsor, ang mga yugtong-yugtong ito na kung saan nakaranas ng tatlong yugto ng pagtaas ng presyo ng kilo ng bigas ay dahil na rin sa influx at papalaking bilang ng pagpasok ng tunet-tunelada, million-million tunet-tuneladang imported rice. And in fact, dun sa sinabi ko kanina na prior to 1995, 1991 to 1994, na ninety-three thousand metric tons lamang ang pumapasok na imported rice. But when even with the quantitative restriction at umabot na sa 1.3 million metric tons ang yearly na pumapasok, taon ang pumapasok sa ating bansa ng mga imported na bigas, it didn't stop the spike of prices per kilo of rice. From thirteen to twenty-five to thirty-eight, malaking halaga po ang itinaas sa tatlong yugto ng pagtaas na iyan. Ngayon, ang tinatanong po ng kinatawang ito, distinguished sponsor, Mrs. Speaker, the guarantees, what are the specific guarantees of this bill that will prevent from spike of prices or to maintain the affordability of per kilo of rice in the market now? Ang garantiya pong sinasabi ng kinatawang ito, distinguished sponsor, Mrs. Speaker, was the same guarantees that we asked during the deliberation and the approval of Oil Regulation Law. Remember colleagues, when Congress deliberated the Oil Regulation Law, the same promise of free market competition of oil products to enter in the Philippine economy. Dahil nga sa kompetisyon na 'yan, bababa ang presyo ng mga produktong petrolyo. These are the same promises, my dear colleagues. Now, I am asking distinguished sponsor, what are the specific guarantees na sinasabi natin sa panukalang batas na ito na magmimintina ang affordability ng presyo ng bigas?
Mrs. Speaker, distinguished interpreter, malaki po pong pagkakaiba ng deregulation ng langis sa deregulation na mangyayari dito sa panukalang batas na ito. Kasi po, dun sa langis, that is a full deregulation. Dito po sa panukalang batas na ito, hindi po natin inaalis ang ahensya ng NFA, ang National Food Authority na magangkat ng bigas para mapupunan 'yung ating tinatawag na buffer stock. Ano po ang ibig sabihin ng buffer stock? Ang ibig sabihin po ng buffer stock ay dapat meron laging nakabodega na bigas sa bodega ng mga NFA na magagamit sa kalamidad, sa emergency situation, at lalong-lalo na sa Price Stabilization Fund. Kaya nga po, kahit na ipapayagan natin magimport, let's say, ang mga private sector ng bigas, hindi po natin winawala. At in fact, binibigyan natin ang mandato ang NFA na magimport ng bigas para sa karampatang fifteen days na consumption. Kaya po, kung ikukumpara po sa langis, hindi po pwedeng ikumpara dahil nga ang sabi ko, 'yung langis po full deregulation, samantala po itong bigas na ito, nandyan pa rin ang NFA na magaangkat po ng bigas para kung kinakailangan, eh, ilabas para ma-kontrol 'yung presyo.
Meaning to say, distinguished sponsor, the specific guarantee that the price, the affordability of the price of rice in the market dahil lang dito sa fund or may iba pang mga component ang panukalang ito na magsasabi? No! In layman's terms, distinguished sponsor, sabihin natin sa ating mga mamayan, sa ating mga konstituents, kapag naipasa ang batas na ito, are we really sure that the current price of rice, let's say, the thirty-eight peso NFA rice per kilo at the market today? Dapat nga mas mababa pa dyan eh. Pero tila, merong mahikang nangyayari sa institusyon o at ahensya ng NFA na mula sa dalawang putlimang piso dapat kada kilo, ngayon ay naging thirty-eight na. Sabihin natin, kung hindi kayang babaan, is there a guarantee coming from our distinguished sponsor and the principal authors of this bill na kapag ito ay naipasa, aasahan ba natin ng mamayan na mananatili sa tatlong putwalong piso kada kilo ang bigas on NFA rice? At hindi na ito tataas? At dapat nga, inaasahan natin mas bababa as per the promise of this bill dahil sa malayang kompetisyon ng mga importer at mga imported na bigas na papasok?
Mrs. Speaker, distinguished interpreter, we could not provide the specific guarantees as being asked or clarified by the interpreter. However, in section nine of the bill, there is, we provided the power and authority of the president na kapag meron sudden in fluctuation ang bigas, pwede niya, ang pwedeng ang presidente, "In the interest of general welfare and national security, the president may increase, reduce, revise, or adjust existing rates on port duty including necessary change in classification applicable to the importation of rice." So ibig sabihin, kapag meron mga unnecessary na paggalawang presyo ng bigas, meron power and authority, binibigyan natin ang power and authority ang presidente para idiklara o kaya magbigay ng mga safeguards para bumaba o kaya lumebel 'yung presyo ng bigas sa kasalukuyang level? Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter.
Mrs. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, napakagandang pakinggan po. Tila di ba huba sa kasalukuyang setup, meron ang ganyang kapangyarihan ang presidente bilang umuupong chairperson ng NFA council? Hindi huba sa kasalukuyang setup ngayon, meron ang ganong kapangyarihan ang ating pangulo?
Meron nga po, kaya nga po, the president, no last then President Rodrigo Rova Duterte, no ayaw ng NFA council na magimport ng bigas, sinabihan sila ang presidente Duterte, "Magimport kayo ng bigas." Kaya walang nagawa 'yung NFA council, sumulod at nagimport nga ng bigas.
Kaya nga po, distinguished sponsor, halos kalampagin na ang mga NFA outlets ng ating mga mamayan na naghahanap ng murang bigas mula sa NFA, pero dahil nga sinasabi, ang stock at ang warehouse ay halos wala ng laman na pipilitan ang ating mga mamayan na bumili doon sa bigas na mula sa mga commercial. Tila meron na pong matinding kahirapan doon. Pero hindi natin narinig, o siguro hindi ko lang napansin, na ang dapat ginawa ng pangulo ay i-invoke noong panahon. Noong sinasabi kong tatlong yugto ng pagtaas ng presyo ng imported rice mula sa thirteen pesos twenty-five to twenty-eight, bakit hindi po ginamit ang ganyang kapangyarihan? Not only to regulate, but of course, iba pa pong usapin ang nagiging papel ng mga rice smugglers, ang nagiging papel ng rice cartel. Mamaya ko pa po 'yan tatalakayin, pero doon lang po tayo sa sinasabing safeguard and special provision at power ng pangulo na hindi namang po 'yan bago at meron na 'yan sa kasalukuyan. Pero hindi po natin naramdaman na sa kahaba-haba ng panahon, tila tinanggap na lang, o ayaw ko mang sabihin tinanggap dahil meron naman talagang nagprotesta, may nag-ingay, sa bawat pisong pagtaas ng presyo ng bigas, malaking bagay na po 'yan sa karoniwang tao, malaking bagay na po 'yan sa mga minimum wage earners, malaking bagay na po 'yan sa mga hindi nga nakatakda ang kanilang sahuran kada araw o 'yung mga tinatawag nating informal workers na hindi minimum ang batayan ng kanilang sahuran kada araw. Pero sa ganitong kalagayan po, from twenty-five to thirty-eight, thirteen pesos po ang itinaas, malaking bagay po 'yan. Pero bakit tila tanggap ng ating gobyerno pangunahin ang ihehikotibo na hayaan ang ganyang kalakaran at isubo ng pilit sa kanyang mamayan ang ganitong presyuhan ng bigas? Kaya bumabalik po ang kinatawang ito, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, the specific guarantees because promise can be a promise today. But in the actuality, upon the enactment of this bill to allow at maranasan ng mamayan, natataas pa rin at 'yung sinasabing affordability ng bigas ay tila nakasulat lamang sa papel, pero sa aktwal ng karanasan, mahal pa rin ang kada presyo ng bigas. Sino po ang sisisihin ng taong bayan? Di huba tayong mga mambabatas na nandito sa kapulongang ito na nagtalakay sa panukalang batas na ito? At tila, tiyak ako dahil ang nakaupung speaker, ang siyang pangunahing principal sponsor ng panukalang batas na ito ay maipapasa ito sa kongreso. Pero kapag umabot pa sa punto noong panahon, that the same promise of Oil Regulation Law, sinabi sa mamayan na bababa ang presyo ng mga petrolyo, produktong petrolyo, at pag dumating ang panahon na 'yan, na hindi kayang imintina ang presyo ng bigas to thirty-eight pesos at tataas sa darating ng mga panahon dahil alam natin the internal and external factors of how the pricing of the basic commodities play in our economy today. Marami po ang inaasahan nating lalaro at makakaapekto sa pagtakda ng presyo na 'yan. Now, what I am trying to insist, Mrs. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, convince the people the specific guarantees that in the event this law will be passed, this bill will be passed and be implemented, we can no longer expect spike of prices of rice per kilo in the market to achieve the objective of affordability to our consuming public. That is precisely the very reason why we ask the specific guarantees, Mrs. Speaker, distinguished sponsor. May I go to another point? Distinguished sponsor, in the bill there is the provision of anti-dumping. Am I correct?
Can I ask the interpreter, the specific provision she is, I mean, he is referring to in the bill?
Well, what I am asking is, is there any in the provision of the bill in House Bill 7735 that reiterates the provision of the current quantitative restriction on the event of dumping? Therefore, there should be a provision in the bill that states to ensure an anti-dumping provision. So I am asking now, if there is in the provision of the bill, an anti-dumping provision?
As it is now, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter, I could not see any provision that relates to any provision of anti-dumping.
Why?
Actually, I am not, I do not understand the point of the interpreter. If the interpreter insists on putting an anti-dumping provision, then I guess, and I believe, that he just proposed it as an amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Precisely, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, the very objective of this bill is to liberalize the entry of imported rice in the country from quantitative restriction to tarification. Therefore, it is incumbent upon the proponents of this bill to expect influx of entry, deluge or flooding of imported rice in the country. Because importation nga eh, ang papasok, tarification na lang 'yung kanyang ibibigay o kanyang iko-comply bago makapasok sa bansa. Ngayon, because in the bill, as I understand, there is still the limit, the three hundred fifty thousand metric tons minimum access volume, meron pa rin 'yan. Pero dahil nga ang kinakailangang abutin from the supply at 'yung demand na kinukonsumo ng kanyang mamayan, we have still 1.3 million metric tons na parang sinasabing ang kakulangan na pupunuan ng pagpasok ng imported na bigas na ito. The tendency of dumping is inevitable. Hindi pa po kasama dyan ang diskarte ng cartel at mga smuggler. Even in the compliance of the required volume entry or entering in the Philippines, 'yung dumping po ay mangyayari at mangyayari. Now, what I am asking is the provision specific stating an anti-dumping provision in this bill.
As I have said, Mr. Speaker, there is no specific provision containing anti-dumping in this bill. However, I would like to point out, Mr. Speaker, that we have a number of anti-dumping laws already in place and this covers all commodities. It does not, it's not specifically for rice, but it covers all commodities. And I'm referring to Republic Act 8752, Republic Act 8751, and Republic Act 8800.
But it will clearly affect because, distinguished sponsor, remember, before the enactment of this bill, bago po 'yung maipasa ito, 'yung anti-dumping provision is applicable to all agricultural products. Dahil nga, papasok tayo sa bagong moda, no, from quantitative restriction to tarification. Again, although I, as I understood, sinasabi ng ating kagalanggalang na sponsor, maari namang niyang ipasok, my point is, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, rice importation should be regulated. It is clear. However, when tarification is in place, then therefore, sino po ba ang makakapigil sa mga pribadong trader, local or even 'yung mga big players na hindi makakomply dito dahil kaya namang niyang bayaran ano man ang itinatakdang tarification rate? The only real limit to private sector importation, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, is the ability to pay the tariffs. At chicken lang po 'yan, napakaliit na bagay lang po 'yan dahil kaya namang niyang abutin. abutin at kaya naman niyang ikumplay 'yan. Pero 'yun nga. My point is, distinguished sponsor, Mr. Speaker, ano na ngayon ang mangyayari sa percentage of purchase ng NFA sa ating mga lokal palay producers? Will it still remain at ten percent of the local produce to be bought by NFA?
Mr. Speaker, ah, as the bill is crafted, okay? The NFA will continue to buy palay from our farmers at a subsidy price of seventeen pesos per kilo. Wala pong, wala po tayong nilagay na maximum or minimum kung ilan ang bibilihin ng NFA.
Hindi po 'yan totoo, Mr. Speaker, because in our research, ang dapat mandato ng NFA ay abutin ang pagbili sa kanyang mga lokal na mga magsasaka. The average of ten percent sa kabuang lokal na produksyon. Alam po ng NFA 'yan. Ngunit sa karanasan at sa nagdaang mga dekada, kahit kalahati ay hindi inabot ng NFA dahil nga doon sa pagtakda ng kanyang buying price na napakaliit. Currently, the approved NFA Council buying price before President Duterte ordered to increase from seventeen to twenty pesos is seventeen pesos per kilo. Umalma at hindi po 'yan kayang ibenta ng ating mga magsasaka sa ganyang presyuhan. Dahil nga sa production cost pa lang ng ating mga magsasaka sa palay ay buluging lugina at inutang pa niya ito sa trader. How much more kung ibebenta niya sa ganyang presyuhan ay talagang papatayin ang kanyang kabuhayan? In two thousand to two thousand nine, distinguished sponsor, meron lamang pong two point three percent 'yung buying percentage ng NFA. Mas maliit po ito noong twenty-ten to twenty-seventeen na umabot lamang sa one point six percent. Ibig sabihin sa mandato niyang ten percent, ang nakumplay lamang niya at nagawa lamang niya ay one point six percent.
Ah, aasahan po natin talaga 'yun dahil naman po 'yung ating mga magsasaka ayaw magbenta sa NFA dahil nga mas matasang presyo ng bili ng mga private traders. Kaya nga po kung sama, kung halimbawa, 'yung sa private trader bumibili ka ng twenty-two pesos per kilo at 'yung seventeen pesos kilo lang per ang bili ng NFA, syempre ibebenta mo sa private trader.
Totoo po at hindi po natin dapat sisihin ang mga magsasaka na hindi niya ibebenta sa NFA dahil nga sa barat pa ang presyo maliit, hindi sa mga kabawi doon sa kanyang kapital, sa kanyang inutang sa trader, kaya naman sanang punuan ito ng ating gobyerno. Sa pamamagitan, for example, for this year, NFA has seven billion budget for purchase. Kung sa seventeen pesos ang kanyang buying rate at sinabi niya, nirekomenda niya kay Pangulong Duterte as early as the third or the second quarter of twenty-seventeen, sinabi na niya kay Pangulong Duterte na ang alokasyong ito by twenty-eighteen, dapat taasan na natin from seventeen to twenty, twenty-one, or even twenty-two pesos. Malaking bagay po na ibuhos ang bilyong-bilyong perang ito sa pagbili sa ating mga lokal na mga palay producers. Pero hindi po 'yan ginawa. At 'yun nga hinayaan na lang na paliit ng paliit ang porcento ng compliance sa mandato ng NFA sa pagbili sa kanyang mga magsasaka. Now, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, in the bill, tarification sets the bond rates for rice imported into the country. Letter A, for rice imports from non-ASEAN WTO members, member countries, forty percent, most favored nation rate if the volume is within the three hundred fifty thousand metric tons map. Am I correct, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor?
Ah, yes, under section five of the bill, it sets the bond rate for rice imported in the Philippines, forty percent MFN rate for importation within three hundred fifty thousand metric tons and one hundred eighty percent FN MFN outkota and for the Atiga, our imported rice originating from ASEAN member states, it shall be the Atiga rate.
If the volume is over the map, the tariff rate according to the bill is one hundred eighty percent. Am I correct?
Yes.
So, let's say, pag ang ipinasok ng isang negosyante ay four hundred thousand metric tons, ang kanyang hiningan ng import permit at inaprubahan ito, papasok four hundred metric tons, ibig sabihin pa po nito, kahit na sa MFN ito manggaling ay nagpas na sa forty percent at ang kanyang itatakdang koleksyon ay nasa one hundred eighty percent na.
Yes.
For rice imports from ASEAN member countries, zero tariffs in accordance with the commitments of the country to the ASEAN Trade in Goods Agreement. Sa Atiga po, ibig sabihin, saan po nga nanggagaling pangunahin o malaking bahagi sa nagdaang mga taon, itong one point three million metric tons, di ho ba nanggaling ito sa Vietnam at Thailand?
Yes, distinguished interpreter.
Then therefore, kung nanggaling sa Vietnam and Thailand, if my understanding is correct, they are members of the ASEAN. Am I correct?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Then therefore, the Atiga is being enforced.
Yes.
Now, mas lalo pa pong nakakabahala, distinguished sponsor, Mr. Speaker, kung ganito po ang aplikasyon and in fact, in the years to come, from the fiftieth ASEAN gathering held in our country which we hosted, sabi nga, one ASEAN itutulak sa darating ng mga panahon pa o mga dekada pa. Eventually, hindi ho ba nakakabahala na zero tariffs?
As it, as it, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter, as it is now, currently, the Atiga rate for rice is thirty-five percent. Now, assuming, going by the interpretation of the distinguished interpreter, assuming that in the future it will become zero percent, well, I would like to believe that kung sakasakaling zero percent 'yung imported rice, 'yun naman iba nating mga iniimport or ineexport ay magkakaroon ng karampatang balancing equation, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter.
Naku po, distinguished sponsor, huwag po nating ikumpara ang ganyang komputasyon. Alam namang po natin, bigas bilang pangunahing kinukonsumo natin. The eventual effect, if we submit our Philippine economy as the policy being recommended by the economic managers to comply with the Atiga full-blown, one ASEAN cooperation, eventually igigiit nila, bahagi dyan ng compliance ng Atiga is the zero tarification. Ibang usapin pa po, 'yung produktong ineexport natin not only in our ASEAN member countries, in the neighboring countries, but also to other parts of the continent. Pero ang usaping ito ay makakaapekto ng malaki sa pang-araw-araw na kinukonsumo ng kanyang mamayan. Ano po ba ang magiging epekto kapag wala na pong tarifikasyon in compliance with the Atiga? Ang pagpasok ng bigas ay talagang sesimentuhan na natin ang lapida ng ating mga magsasaka ng palay. Sino pa ang bibili sa napakamahal na per kilo ng palay ng ating mga magsasaka sa kanyang sariling kayod kumpara sa imported na bigas na mas mura dahil nga wala ng tarifikasyon? Di ho ba kataksilan sa interes ng ating mamayan? Kung ito ay hahayaan ng kanyang gobyerno at pahihin tulutan ng kanyang gobyerno na mangyari ito? Remember, distinguished sponsor, Mr. Speaker, kapag umabot po sa punto, now, the policy of our government itself is the perpetrator of killing one particular sector of our society. Naku po, hindi tayo magtataka na mga magsasaka ng palay ay maglalaho at maglalaho at aasa na lang tayo lahat sa importasyon. That I do not want to happen, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor. Precisely, the opposition of this representation in the full liberalization of our economy is to be protecting the welfare and interest of its people. Maiba po tayo, distinguished sponsor, Mr. Speaker, noong binasa ko po ang panukalang batas na ito, still, the NFA is the regulatory agency for private rice importation. But regulation is limited to licensing. Um, sa praktika po ngayon, hindi naman sigur lingit sa kaalaman ang ating distinguished sponsor na merong import permit for sale. Ano ho ba? Meron pong ganyang kalakaran sa nagdaang mga panahon na pumutok nga 'yan at nailabas nga 'yan, naitalakay nga 'yan sa mga naging pagdinig ng Senado at Kongreso 'yung import permit for sale na ini-issue pangunahin ng ahensyan ito. Imposing and collecting fees and charges, but it has no power to regulate the quantity or volume back because that is against the tarification. Then therefore, hindi lang ho 'yan three hundred fifty thousand, kaya po nilang magimport more than what is the minimum access volume is being implied of. The regulation as to restricting volumes rests with the power of the president. But he can only exercise this power during rice shortage and when there is an urgent need to act. Ibig sabihin po, distinguished sponsor, pangunahing, Mr. Speaker, gagawin lamang ito ng pangulo kapag sinabing merong rice shortage. Pero 'yun na nga, hindi magkakaroon ng rice shortage and in fact, the flooding of imported rice is the inevitable situation in the future. Sino ho ba ang magre-regulate at wala na pong pipigil sa mga pribadong negosyante o negosyo na magpapasok ng million-million or hundreds of thousands of metric tons of imported rice? The flow with that provision, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, is during rice shortages, if there is any, magkakaroon ng abnormal high prices. I will return to the point of my argument, Mrs. Sponsor, distinguished sponsor, Mr. Speaker, the guarantees. Kasi nga po, 'yung pagtakda ng presyo at 'yung paggalaw ng presyo na 'yan will not only matter on the statistics of supply and demand. Pangunahin, sabihin natin, the player, the key player of setting the price is essentially the movement between the supply and the demand. Pangunahin po 'yan. Pero let us consider, my colleagues, that there are laws currently that affects the pricing of the basic goods and commodity, the food and non-food items. Sabihin na natin, and clear example, my dear colleagues, is the enactment of the Tax Reform Acceleration and Inclusion Law. Why? Bakit po sa panahon noong unang araw ng Enero na ipinasa ang batas na train ay nagkaroon ng epekto? Domino effect in the setting up of prices sa bigas? Not only the NFA rice, dahil pansinin niyo po, nandito namang po 'yung staff, kaya po namang i-research 'yan, ilang beses po tumaaas ang presyo ng bigas ng NFA and ng commercial rice from January one of twenty-eighteen up to June of twenty-eighteen? Maraming beses po. In fact, for the record, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, I have here a clipping of the announcement of NFA citing because of train, they are forced to set a two peso increase per kilo of NFA rice because of train. Ibig sabihin po, distinguished sponsor, Mr. Speaker, magiging dagdag na pabigat at magiging dagdag na pasanin ng mamayan kapag dumagdag ang panukalang ito. Hindi lang po sa usapin na mas lulubah ang kalagayan ng ating mga magsasaka ng palay. Worse, I cannot understand the alignment of priorities of this government. Instead of expanding rice lands for local production and consumption, tila baga mas prioridad ng gobyerno ito na bigyang pabor ang mga lupain para sa mga smalalaking negosyo, agri-business tulad ng mga plantasyon, ng oil palm, saging, pinyah, rubber, at iba pa. Imbis na pangunahing dagdagan at palawakin ang mga lupain para sa konsumo ng kanyang mamayan, hindi ko po maintindihan na hinahayaan ng gobyerno ito na paliitin. Mas paliitin pa ang mga lupang dapat ang kanyang inilulual ay sa gamit at konsumo ng kanyang mamayan. In the provision of this bill, the president upon the recommendation of the NFA has the power to restrict volumes using the rice safeguard tariff to prevent rice import surges. Again, I think this provision is clearly stated in my previous argument, not only the existing Republic Act not only the existing Republic Act on Anti-Dumping of Agricultural Products, but also specifically in this proposed bill. But however, tariff adjustment will not have the effect of preventing dumping. If the importers can pay the adjusted tariffs from 350,000 metric tons MAF of 40%, and even if they can pay the 180% tarification of more than the minimum access volume, sino po ang makakapigil sa pagtakda ng presyo na yan? And we will not expect, ha? Magkakaroon ba ng murang presyo? Papaano mababawi? Nung trader, kung ang pinayaran niya ay 180% tarification rate at magmimintinat siya sa presyong sabihin natin 38 pesos, ay lugging-lugi siya. Hindi siya magnene-gosyon yan. Then therefore, the pricing, the setting of price per kilo is within his or her dictates. Hindi pa po dyan, ini-incorporate natin, distinguished sponsor, Mrs. Speaker, 'yung galawang kartel. How would this bill ensure na hindi mag-usap-usap ang mga importer to set the price sa ganitong presyuan? For example, dahil nga, wala namang, sabihin natin, kahit na umabot po yan sa 2 million metric tons ang pagpasok ng imported rice sa Pilipinas, mag-usap-usap sila na dapat ang presyo nito sa mercado deducted by all the expenditures na nagawa, nakuha sa kanila o nagastos nila. Ano po ang makakapigil? O ano ang mekanismo ng ating gobyerno na ang pagtatakda ng presyong ito ay nasa range ng affordability, accessibility, and affordability? Hindi ho ba luluhod na lang ang gobyerno sa dikta ng mga key players na ito kung ano ang itatakdang presyo?
Uh, please mind of your interpolation, you have only 2 minutes remaining.
Akala ko po, Mr. Speaker, sa pagbabago ng liderato ng kapulungan ito, magbabago na rin ang pagtrato ng ating interpolasyon. Well, I have a lot of questions to raise. In fact, I haven't extos, hindi ko pa po naipaliwanag at nahihingan ng paliwanag ang ating kagalanggalang na sponsor sa iba pang mga mahalagang usapin. Pero dahil nga, meron na lang akong dalawang minuto.
Eh, isang minuto na lang oh.
Eh, isang minuto. In closing, Mrs. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, again, this bill cannot convince this representation the specific guarantees in protecting the welfare of our farmers and the consuming populace. Imbis na po unahin ang panukalang batas na ito sa usapin ng in compliance with our Agreement on Agriculture Provision of the World Trade Organization Commitment. Nakikita na, nakikita po na po sa
Pag-sanay po ng ating kagalanggalang na kayig at tapos na po ang ating pong oras
I'm winding up, Mrs. Speaker, winding up. One minute point, to assert my point, no? Imbis na po unahin ng ating gobyerno ang pagpapalakas ng mekanismo at mga batas na magsisiguro sa pagpapalakas ng kakayanan ng ating mga magsasaka ng palay. Ang panukalang batas na ito, yun nga, ang sinasabi ko, magsesemento sa lapida ng ating mga magsasaka. Ito po 'yung unly rice na hindi katanggap-tanggap sa mamian Pilipino. Ang unly rice na imported na babaha sa mercado, ang sasaya lamang nito ay ang kartel, foreign and local cartels na may key element sa larong ito. Maraming salamat.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the next interpolator is the Honorable Tom Villarín of party list Akbayan.
Congressman Villarín is recognized.
May we suspend for a few minutes, Mr. Speaker?
Session suspended. Congressman Villarín, you may now proceed with your interpolation. Session resume.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Majority Leader. May the good sponsor be open to some questions now with regard to this proposed policy measure.
I would gladly clarify any questions from the interpolator, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, good sponsor, Mr. Speaker. To elucidate on this policy measure, which I think affects a great majority of Filipinos, the policy now is that we have non-tariff restrictions imposed on rice coming from outside so that we could protect the local producers of rice. So, in gist, that is the objective of this policy measure. Am I correct, good sponsor?
It is the other way around. Because we are moving from non-tariff to tariffed policy, Mr. Speaker.
No, what I'm saying, good sponsor, is that the existing, the existing measure now that we want to change also has that objective to protect our local producers. Uh, the non-tariff measures also has that objective. Because I'd like to go into a comparison between the benefits from moving from non-tariff to tariff measures, no? As a policy shift in terms of addressing the need to have rice for the consumers and at the same time, the need to protect our local farmers.
Mrs. Speaker, distinguished interpolator, any way of, I mean, whether it's tariff or non-tariff, the ultimate objective of the bill or any law for that matter is for the protection of rice producers and rice consumers.
So, definitely, the existing regime of QR and MAFs also would address this uh, this objective, but as, well, as the proponent or this bill would like to suggest, QR and MAV or the MAFs are not enough, no? To protect the rise in prices of rice, a basic commodity, as well as it would not also address, no? The needs of farmers to be protected from competition coming from imports. So, is that true? I mean, QR and MAFs are not
Well, QR, MAF, tariff, or non-tariff, the ultimate objective of any law or this bill for that matter is for the protection of the rice farmers and the rice consumers.
Okay, now, in this latest series of events related to inflation, no? Because what we're saying, one classic example of the restrictions or the limitations of the existing policy regime on rice importation based on QR and MAF is precisely what happened, no? Nadelay 'yung, 'yung pagpasok ng rice imports, so nag-spike 'yung prices. Do you have any data to say that how much was the contribution in the inflation dahil nga nadelay 'yung pagpasok ng imported rice? So, ibig sabihin, kung sana naka-import tayo nung May or June, masasabi mo ba na hindi sana nagkaroon ng spike o pagtaas, no? Uh, ng presyo ng bigas at presyo din ng other commodities? Because precisely, they say that our economic managers were saying that nakatulong dun sa pagspikes sa importation itong delay sa rice importation.
Mrs. Speaker, the recent spiking of the price of rice is a confluence of several event. Not only, it's not only attributed doon sa sinasabi ng ating distinguished interpolator na nadelay 'yung pagpasok ng imported rice. Isa rin po, sa naging dahilan nito ay 'yung ating uh, pagkartel o 'yung hoarding ng bigas ng mga malalaking trader ng bigas. Because, as it is, ayun po sa ating kagalanggalang na sekretary ng Department of Agriculture, hindi dapat mangyari yun dahil meron tayong sapat na local production ng bigas at hindi dapat mangyari natataas ang presyo ng palay kung hindi sana na-hold o nagawang pigilin ng ating mga private traders 'yung pagbenta ng o pagpaglabas ng bigas sa mercado. So, hindi lamang po ito dahilan na nadelay 'yung importation ng NFA rice. And gusto ko lamang pong sabihin na dalawang klase po kasi ang bigas natin dito sa Pilipinas. Isang commercial rice at isang NFA rice. Pag-sinabi ko kasing NFA rice, yun po 'yung mura na bigas. Yun pong hindi nakapasok ay 'yung mura na bigas. Pero marami po tayong supply doon sa commercial rice o presyo ng 38 pesos o 41 pesos. Ang wala po sa atin ay 'yung imported rice na mas mura. Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpolator.
So, in effect, what you're saying, good sponsor, is that if the delay in the coming of the rice imports did not contribute uh, to the spike in the inflation rate?
Hindi po sinasabi na hindi, hindi, hindi. Isa po yan sa naging dahilan, pero hindi lamang po yun ang tanging dahilan.
Yes, what I'm, I'm want to know is, kung isa yan sa dahilan, do we have studies or data to say how much in the part of the inflation rate uh, hike 'yung na-contribute dun sa delay? Because they say that other contributory factors was the spike in the global prices of oil, 'yung train law, which supposedly, no? Uh, also caused, no? Uh, the domestic, I mean, the inflation rate to hike? Because, again, uh, sunod-sunod 'yung pagtaas din ng presyo nga ng mga bilihin. So, yun lang, hinahanap natin
Wala po kaming datos.
Wala tayong datos.
Sa kagalanggalang na interpolator, kung meron man na na-contribute sa pagspike ng inflation rate 'yung delay ng imported na NFA rice?
Well, I am going to this line of questioning, Mr. Speaker, your honor, because precisely, we say that the D and E class, no? Uh, which was hit largely by inflation, 30 to 50% of household expenditures ay nasa bigas, no? At sinasabi nga natin na malaking bahagi, the rice is basically uh, a big part in the expenditure uh, item of each household, no? So, ang sinasabi din ngayon na ang nawala sa market during those times was the NFA rice, no? Okay, the NFA rice, which supposedly uh, should come from the imports, no? So, most of the imports are the NFA rice, no? At hindi naging available sa D and E, the poor consumers, no? And in effect, we could say na ang talagang natamaan dito sa spike, sa inflation, are the poor consumers. And precisely, you're saying now that para hindi ma-delay, okay? 'Yung importation, then you need to liberalize importation by having this 'yung tarification na lang, no? So, ibig sabihin, uh, we leave it to to a policy of imposing tariffs rather than having restrictions in terms of the volume that would come, no?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpolator. Uh, but again, this bill was crafted not because of the delay of the imported NFA rice. Hindi lamang po yun ang dahilan kaya natin ginagawa, sinasagawa itong panukalang batas na ito.
You're right, but what I'm pointing out is that it's one of the factors that you are citing that should be cured, no? With this tarification, supposedly with this tarification measure. And now, uh, going into what you said earlier, good sponsor, that merong mga kartel. I thought you, or did I hear it wrong when you said that there's a cartel of rice hoarders or producers?
Alam lang po natin lahat yan.
Alam natin lahat.
Oo, hindi ko lang alam kung hindi niyo po alam.
Meron ata sa tondo, no? Well, anyway, again, when we go to tarification, can the issue of rice, of the rice cartel be addressed? And how would that come into the picture, given that, again, it is still NFA, no? That would control, uh, that would be the regulatory power to, uh,
With the tarification bill, the NFA cannot no longer control the volume of imported rice that would come into the Philippines?
But still, all those who want to import would go through the NFA regardless of volume?
For licensing purposes, yes.
Okay, okay, for licensing and whatever. So, it's still a regulatory agency. What has been taken out is the
The volume?
Yeah, the restrictions in terms of the access, no? Now, I'm pointing to this issue of governance, no? In rice trading, in rice importation. Because the basic problem here is that in the supply chain of rice from the producers or even from the imports, no? Something is wrong, something is skewed, and this policy measure with tarification, how can you assure that these issues on governance in the rice industry can be addressed squarely and can be addressed definitively? Na hindi mangyayari 'yung sudden spike, no? In prices of rice, no? Kasi ang sinasabi mong, well, the president has the authority, no? To limit the imports in a situation or to, I mean, limit the imports through higher, no? Through higher tariffs. Pero again, in the supply chain, the basic problem of control over this distribution and of course, the market, the market of rice, ano 'yung mga guarantees, mga measures that would be put in place?
Again, that was the point of Congressman Casila's line of questioning a while ago. He was asking for the specific guarantees that would be in place in order to maintain the price of rice. And I, again, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter, as far as the bill is crafted, there is no specific guarantees that were placed as provisions in the bill. However, rice tarification would mean that we can no longer control the volume of rice coming into the Philippines. And we all know that imported rice is much, much cheaper than our local rice. In fact, the landed cost of imported rice is, I mean, ranges from about 27 pesos to 28 pesos per kilo. So, dito pa lang, makikita natin na kapag pinabayaan natin na pumasok ang imported rice, alam na agad natin na ang uhuna ng trader is 27 pesos or 28 pesos lamang. Kaya halimbawa, 'yung trader bibigyan natin ng margin o tubo na 5 pesos, dapat ibebenta niya 'yung bigas niya 32 pesos, hanggang 33 pesos lamang.
Well, there's the study conducted by the PIDS, Philippine Institute of Development Studies, that's saying that, of course, the rational or the best reason for tariffication is really to improve governance and the investment climate for the rice supply chain. So meaning, the rational, the reason for being for tariffication is what you've said, no? Wala na tayong limit, papasukin, ilang million tonelada ng bigas, kung sinong gustong magpasok, as long as accredited ng NFA, pasok lang ng pasok. So, diba? So 'yun 'yung kuwan eh, if you flood the market with rice. And precisely, the question now is, dahil nga may anomaly dun sa supply chain, may anomaly dun sa how these cartels have been controlling the supply chain. When you're saying that wala kang guarantees, wala kang assured because as you've said, it would be the market forces that would regulate the supply chain. But it is a given fact, and you even admitted na halos alam ng buong bayan, alam ng taong bayan na may rice cartel.
Yes, but the existence of the cartel is because of the regulation. Tangalin mo 'yung regulation, mawawala 'yung cartel because everybody now will have the opportunity to import rice.
So that is your guarantee, you're saying?
It is not my guarantee, but it is the market forces, it is a market play. So, kaya nagkakaroon po tayo ng cartel because meron lang sampu o ilang individual o ilang organisasyon ang nakakakontrol kasi nga unang-una regulated 'yung pagpasok ng bigas. Ngayon, pag in-open mo 'yan, lahat pwede mag-import. So, I cannot see the cartel controlling kung lahat pwede pumasok. Second, it will be a force of supply and demand. I could not believe that mag-i-import ng marami. The dump nila rito sa bansa natin, kung ilan lang ang pwedeng konsumo ng bansa, hindi po pwede silang mag-import ng mas marami kesa sa demand. Dahil kapag ginawa nila roon, mas lalong babagsak ang presyo. Ngayon, kung mas malaki ang demand, konti ang supply, doon tataas ang presyo. But if you open up, marami ang supply, ang demand mo is, I mean, ano lang, hindi siya tumataas, hindi siya bumababa, siguradong bababa ang presyo.
Well, again, as I've said, tariffication, ang guarantee is the marketplace, the market forces. And in a way, what you are saying in effect is that 'yung smuggling may eliminate then? Would I be right? Because, I mean, anybody can now play and not...
But smuggling is a different thing, okay?
Well, because if NFA can provide all these importers with the necessary permits to import, then why, and prices would ultimately go down, with prices of rice going down? What's the rationale for me to smuggle, for example?
Well, you don't pay tariff, you will not pay tariff pag smuggle. That's precisely the point. Pag smuggle mo, mas mababa ang presyo mo, mas malaki ang kita, I should say. Dahil hindi ka nagbayad ng taripa, ang presyo ng bigas mo is presyo ng merkado. Kaya smuggling is a different play dito po sa tariffication bill.
So with tariffication, you don't eliminate smuggling?
With tariffication, with QR, the smuggling is a different phase.
With tariffication, smuggling would not be curbed by a little?
We don't have any data because, as I have said, smuggling or smugglers resort to smuggling because ayaw nga nila magbayad ng taripa. Now, mas baka, 'yun nga ang sinasabi namin dito. Baka pag-open mo, mas maraming mag-smuggle dahil ayaw nila magbayad ng taripa. Kaya nga 'yung isang panukala namin dito is for the DOF and the Bureau of Customs na dapat higpitan nila 'yung pagpasok ng mga smuggled na bigas or any agriculture products for that matter.
So, again, as what you're saying, the issue of smuggling, the issue of this cartel wouldn't be resolved, even with this...
I believe the issue of cartel will be resolved because we do not control the volume, okay? We do not control of the individual or institution who could import rice. Kaya nga natin i-open eh, that will precisely curb the cartel. But as far as smuggling is concerned, hindi ko po masabi na itong bill na ito ay pwedeng makabawas sa smuggling.
Well, I'll leave you to that, good sponsor. And of course, it's an honest admission that we just focus here on the issue of what would be the benefits of tariffication. What I'm just pointing out that there should be other complementary measures to address this issue of, again, loss of revenues if ever we have tariffication that would accrue to the benefit of farmers. Now, on the issue of governance, because here, we would be setting up or strengthening the NFA council under the proposed measure, the strengthening of the NFA council, then of course, there's this rice fund, rice fund that would exist for six years. Can you provide us with the rationale why the tariffs from rice importation would just be there for six years, not for a longer period?
That will be just for purposes of evaluation. So, the bill is crafted that the RCEF or the Rice Competitive Enhancement Fund will be good for six years unless extended by law. So meaning, after a six-year period, sa fifth year, under the Oversight Committee of the Coco Farm, kung makita natin na kailangan pa talaga itong RCEF na ito, then itutuloy natin by way of amending the law.
So, it's an open-ended provision, meaning the six years is just some sort of, well, a period that in a way would address immediately the concerns of the rice farmers?
Yes, boss.
Now, when we do tariffication, do you have projections? How much will be collected from tariffs for the first year, second year, third year, fourth year, fifth year?
The Department of Finance has submitted the calculation of at least between 6 to 7 billion during the initial year and about 8 billion moving forward. So, in the span of six years, we are looking at about 28 to 30 billion pesos.
28 to 30 billion from the rice tarification?
Yes.
So these are estimates that are on the baseline or on the upper?
Those are estimates given by the Department of Finance.
So conservative estimates, not, I mean...
I believe, I believe that is the conservative calculation from Department of Finance.
Okay. Now, with tariffication, there, according to studies, study by the PIDS, Philippine Institute of Development Studies, that immediately, on the first year of tariffication, there would be a drop in local palay production by 2 million metric tons. Do you know of that study and how would that factor in?
Mrs. Speaker, distinguished interpreter. As of this time, I do not have the study being mentioned by the interpreter, Mr. Speaker.
Well, this is important, Mr. Speaker, because what we're saying here, there would be a loss of income from our farmers because if they cannot compete and practically, they cannot compete with cheap imported rice, then of course, the tendency is really to shift in crops, either to shift in crops or practically leave behind their farmlands. And again, based on that study, 2 million metric tons of loss in local palay production would also be highly significant. And it would also mean that would be losing more of our rice lands and our rice farmers. And consequently, the 7 billion tariff, the revenues from the tariff or the income from tariffication supposedly for the rice farmers, the big question now is, who would benefit from the rice farm if we would lose our local rice farmers?
Again, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker, the bill under section... Under section 15, provides for the usage of the fund. And it includes those farmers who would be displaced with, who would be possibly displaced if and when this bill becomes into law. Because the under section 16, the beneficiaries of the rice fund shall be those rice farmers and rice farm workers and their dependents listed in the RSBSA of the Department of Agriculture, including those who would be possibly displaced.
So, again, well, of course, there are good objectives for that fund. But my point here is, Mr. Sponsor, good, Mr. Speaker, is that parang aanhin pa ang damo kung wala ng kabayo, marami kasabihan, no? So, do we have studies or do we, kumbaga anticipate that situation if and when? Because of tariffication and the volume of rice coming in, there would be a loss in palay production. So, again, does the DA have these projections, data? On how much would we lose in local palay production with tariffication?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter, as regards the study, I mean, a study whether or not there will be possible displacement if, for example, we, I mean, imported rice will be coming into the Philippines, the assumption will be on the reverse. Because even if we open up, the fear of we will be flooded with imported rice would not be imminent because China will be importing rice starting next year. And so therefore, pag 'yung volume ng global rice hindi nadagdagan at meron nag-import from China, hindi rin po tayo babahai ng imported rice. Kaya hindi po kami naniniwala na mababawasam po 'yung ating mga rice farmers or rice land dahil sabi ko nga, hindi 'yung agam-agam na babahin tayo po ng imported rice ay hindi po mangyayari because of market forces outside of the Philippines.
So, again, as what you're saying, there are external forces, like China would be buying more. So, the danger of us being flooded with cheap rice will not happen. So that's your conclusive statement?
Yes.
Okay. Now, two years ago, I think, the good secretary Pinol requested that we extend the QR regime precisely because our farmers, our rice farmers are not yet ready. And the objective for that two-year period is to provide the necessary support for our rice farmers in terms of addressing the issue of cost of production because we all know that one of the major factors that our local palay or our palay's price is high compared to Vietnam and Thailand because of the high cost of production. So, the two-year extension, what happened? What's the assessment of that two-year period? Of course, this year would be included in that two-year period. Meaning, two years back, we requested for an extension. So ang tanuk po, what has been significantly achieved in the past two years?
In fact, we have not requested for any extensions at all. But we, I mean, President Duterte issued Executive Order Number 23 as an interim solution. So, with the advent of Executive Order Number 23, tuliparin po 'yung ating naging status ko, 'yung ating importation. But then again, when this bill becomes into law, because of the tariffs that will be collected, this will now, this tariff will now, or the RCEF fund will now be used to subsidize our rice farmers in the, I mean, it will be spent for hybrid seeds, farming foods, mechanization, and that will effectively lower the cost of production. And with a lower cost of production and an increased productivity, we will end up with competitive farmer, I mean, competitive... we will end up with competitive farmer, I mean, a competitive position vis-à-vis our neighbors. Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor.
Well, uh, thank you for that. But, Mr. Speaker, good sponsor, there were also, okay, uh, well, just recently, I think, COA came up with a report saying that the National Irrigation Administration was not spending or there was underspending or did not use the funds allocated for irrigation in the sum of billions, no? Uh, so, meaning the necessary support infrastructures, I'm afraid, no, has not been given, especially on irrigation. Because again, as I've said, COA came out with that, with that report, no? Uh, likewise, there was this NEDA, no, reports that comoconte 'yung agricultural labor, no? Uh, I mean, although it could be a result of mechanization, as what the good secretary has been doing, but it could be the result of other factors like, uh, well, like 4P beneficiaries in rural areas enrolling their children to school so there's less agricultural, agricultural labor. Or simply that agricultural labor has been moving out of the rural areas and going to much higher paying jobs in the manufacturing and even in the service sector. So what I'm pointing out is that the steep of our agriculture at present, no, while there could be an increase in, in production, an increase in terms of productivity per hectare, the question of sustaining, no, this gains, especially in rice production, uh, what is your, I mean, projection or forecast, no? With regards to our rice farmers, are we getting more rice farmers? Are we having more farmers interested in producing our basic commodity? Or for the next few years, we would be having less rice farmers and less rice planted through, uh, less hectares planted to rice?
I believe, Mr. Speaker, even with the advent of rice tarification, the production of rice will continue to increase. Because as I have said, in the world market or in the global rice market, the, there is, there are only 39.5 million metric tons rice traded. So even if, when 38 million has already been committed, so there is only about 1.5 to 2 million that is free. So we cannot, of course, depend, we cannot depend on imported rice alone. So even in the advent of rice tarification, we should not stop in increasing our rice production because of our imminent fear that any event that would happen globally would, that would affect rice will still, will affect us. So what I'm saying is that kahit na po mag-tarify tayo, dapat hindi natin pabayaan na bumaba 'yung ating rice production. Kasi nga po, hindi tayo nakakasiguro at hindi dapat tayo maging dependent sa imported rice.
Uh, thank you for that, good sponsor, and I fully agree with that statement. Uh, in terms of evidence base and data, uh, in terms also of budget, no, for the DA, for the past 2 or 3 years, are we saying now that the share from the DA's budget for rice, for the rice sector, is it increasing or has it been decreasing or has it leveled off?
Hey, as far as the GAA is concerned, uh, we should understand that in addition to the budget allocated by, I mean, allocated for the DA specifically for rice, we will now have a complimentary budget coming from the rice tariff. And this is the Rice Competitive Enhancement Fund. So ang sinasabi natin dito, bukod po doon sa budget na ina-allocate ng Department of Agriculture para sa ating rice sector, meron tayong sigurado na pantulong sa ating rice farmers namang gagaling dito sa rice tarification act na ito.
So it would be an add-on to the existing?
Yes. So ang sinasabi namin dito, kung halimbawa, meron 10 billion ang DA, Department of Agriculture ngayon para sa rice sector, makakasiguro tayo na every year meron siyang additional 7 billion to 8 billion pesos namang gagaling dito sa Rice Competitiveness Enhancement Fund, na galing ito sa taripa ng mga imported rice. Mr. Speaker, distinguished?
That's, uh, well, good to hear, good sponsor, Mr. Speaker, but...
Yes, because with the implementation of this act, it does not follow nahihintuna po 'yung Department of Agriculture na magkaroon ng budget para sa ating rice farmers. Because ito pong pera o bondo na malilikom dito would complement the DA's program for our rice farmers. Yun nga lang ito, sigurado na dahil ito galing sa taripa.
Yeah, thank you for that. Uh, the existing budget, habang wala pa 'yung tarification, ang tinatanong natin, halimbawa, 2015 to the present, uh, 'yung atin bang allocation sa, sa rice sector tumataas ba? 2015 to 2018 or bumababa, no?
Uh, for the past 5 years, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter, the DA budget allocated for rice alone is about 10 billion pesos.
So 10 billion, excluding the 11 billion for irrigation?
Yes, po.
Okay.
Just rice alone.
Yeah, but, but irrigation practically is mainly for rice.
Yes, po.
And also, most of the farm-to-market roads that the DA is allocating is, most of them are also geared in this, in the rice sector, I assume.
Uh, for the farm-to-market, for the FMR projects, it, it encompasses all, I mean, sectors in the agriculture. So it includes rice, corn, coconut, fisheries and others.
Okay. So I think, good sponsor, Mr. Speaker, the questioning that I've taken, well, in a way that educates us, no, on how, how we approach tarification, from the perspective of, again, the main objective is really to protect our local producers and not to eliminate our local rice farmers because of the fear that imported rice might flood the market. And the good sponsor, Mr. Speaker, has been very helpful in elucidating the concerns, no, of common people. And surely, while he could not state the guarantees, but we're hoping that we'd strengthen and if a council, the participation of the rice farmers in, in that council. And of course, the details, as I've said, the devil is in the details in terms of the implementation of the rice fund, how it should be dispersed, no, are all too important, no? Not to be left out simply because we need to pass this law. So thank you for the time, Mr. Speaker, good sponsor. Thank you, Majority Leader, too. Magandang hapon. Maraming salamat.
Thank you, distinguished interpreter. Majority Leader.
Um, next to interpolate, Mr. Speaker, is the Honorable Cecil Chavez of Butil Party List.
You may proceed, gentlelady.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would like to make a manifestation in House Bill Number 7735, which proposes to impose tariff in lieu of quantitative restriction on the importation of rice. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, the immediate lifting of quantitative restriction to rice importations would bring economic woes to our rice farmers. This representation in Butil Farmers Party believe that our rice farmers are not prepared to compete locally and globally, or at least to maintain its present production capacity given the high cost of production and the lack of government support that would guarantee our rice farmers' welfare. While this representation is aware of our country's commitment to the WTO, I submit that it is incumbent upon Congress to put in place first the safety nets that would protect our farmers with the imposition of tariff in lieu of the quantitative restriction on rice importations, as well as the strengthening of our rice self-sufficiency program. This, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, should come first. Rice is the most important food crop, a staple food in most of the country. It is produced extensively in Luzon, in western Visayas, in southern Mindanao and central Mindanao. This means that millions of farmers and their families are dependent on rice production. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, in 2017, the total palay rice output met 93% of the country's annual requirement. As such, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, this representation in Butil Farmers Party submit that we can achieve rice self-sufficiency and this should come first before we embark on rice importations. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues.
Majority Leader.
Um, the last one to interpolate in our list, Mr. Speaker, is the Honorable Edsel Lagman of the First District of Albay.
The gentleman from the First District of Albay, Congressman Lagman, is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Will the distinguished sponsor yield to some questions?
I, I gladly accede to the clarificatory questions to be espoused by the distinguished gentleman from Albay, Mr. Speaker.
May we know, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, what is the principal objective of the policy of quantitative restriction on the importation of rice?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter, I believe that the foremost objective of this, of setting of the QR in when, when the Philippines joined WTO in 1995 is to protect our rice farmers from the influx of rice, imported rice, Mr. Speaker.
It is for that reason, distinguished sponsor, that the Philippines repeatedly requested for the extension of the policy on quantitative restriction. Is that correct?
Yes, the, Miss Honorable Interpreator, that is correct.
Now, distinguished sponsor, are we adapting the rice import tarification? Because the government is not anymore keen or negotiating for another extension?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter, the Philippine government has already negotiated for 2 extensions. Starting in 1995, we extended it in 2012, and another extension in 2017. However, with these extensions, the, we, of course, as, as the trade negotiating balance, we have exceeded to the increase of the volume of MAB or the minimum access volume. Because originally, the ball, the MAB in 1995 was set at 298,000 metric tons. And when we extended it in 2012, it has increased to 350,000 metric tons. And in the last extension, it was increased to 805,200 with a reduced tariff from 50%, 40% and now 35%. Now, aside from these trade negotiating balances, we have also, we also exceeded some of the tariff imposed on other agricultural products. So there is always a trade-off. So in the final analysis, when we were about to ask for another extension, we were in the apprehensive because the WTO might ask us some concessions in our other agricultural products, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter.
Will these trade-offs terminate if we forego with the policy of quantitative restriction?
Uh, I believe so, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter.
Uh, why, why is it that you said, distinguished sponsor, you believe so? You are not certain?
Yes, the, when we were, when we had the hearing, I mean, the, the technical working group, I specifically asked the Department of Finance under the WTO, what would happen if, for example, we, we ask for another extension or renegotiate this, this QR? And unfortunately, the answer we were able to solicit from the people from DOF is that, number 1, it's high time that we now proceed from QR, uh, from quantitative restriction to tarification. And number 2, there is, there is, what are called, an apprehension that we might be sanctioned in our other agricultural products, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter.
My question is, once we abandon quantitative restriction policy and embark on rice importation tarification, will the trade-offs imposed on us by WTO countries be lifted or they will continue? Because they are already there.
Yeah, uh, it will be, I mean, all those concessions will be revert back to the original tariff level, distinguished sponsor, Honorable Speaker.
And what is our authority in saying that all of these trade-offs will be terminated and we will revert back to the former situation?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter, it, I mean, the, the, the trade-off will be lifted or revert back to its original level are all embodied in Executive Order Number 23.
Well, Executive Order Number 23 is a unilateral issuance by the Philippine government. What I would like to know is whether, under any agreement with the concerned countries, there is a stipulation that once we abandon the quantitative restriction policy, these trade-offs will also terminate?
It is incorporated in the waiver agreement under AO, I mean, on the, in Annex 5 of WTO Agreement on Agriculture, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter.
Can we read into the records the pertinent stipulation to that effect?
I will, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpolator, I will provide the copy of that particular provision in the WTO agreement.
I don't need a copy, Mr. Speaker. All I want is the distinguished sponsor reading into the records the stipulation that once we abandon quantitative restriction, these trade-offs will also be terminated, and we revert to the condition prior to the imposition of these trade-offs.
Mr. Speaker, I have here with me a decision of the General Counsel of the World Trade Organization dated 25 July 2014. And it decided under Item 7 thereof. It says, "The concessions referred under Paragraph 2 and Annex A herein, and all other concessions entered into by the Philippines under this waiver shall cease to exist upon the termination or expiration of this waiver."
Well, to me, that is very explicit. Thank you so much, distinguished sponsor, for reading that into the records. That is an assurance that these trade-offs will be obliterated. Now, let me go to my next question. In contrast, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, what is the principal objective of tarification of rice importation?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpolator, one of the major objectives of the rice tarification, of course, is for the protection of our rice farmers and rice consumers. That even if we engage into the regime of tarification, we will have to provide specific measures for the protection of our rice farmers. And this is therefore provided under the relevant provisions of this bill, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor.
If the objective of rice tarification on the protection of the rice farmers is the same as that of quantitative restriction, now what is the difference between the two?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, it is so unfortunate that when the waiver on the special treatment provision has expired in June 30, 2017, we were left with no recourse but to introduce legislation on rice tarification, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpolator.
In other words, what triggered the proposed bill on tarification of rice importation is the expiration of that policy of quantitative restriction?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, distinguished interpolator.
And not for the purpose of protecting our rice farmers in the same manner that quantitative restriction had that objective? Now, what will be the effect of rice tarification on the gate price of palay?
As I have said a while ago, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpolator, with respect to the farm gate of palay, it would not have any effect because the local production of palay, okay, as it is, without any additional subsidy from the government, is still thirteen pesos per kilo. With the introduction of this bill, when this bill becomes into law, there is the possibility that the production cost of palay will be lowered because of the subsidy that will be given to our rice farmer from the Rice Competitive Enhancement Fund, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpolator.
So, what the distinguished sponsor is saying, even with this rice tarification policy, there will be no effect at all on the farm gates of palay?
There will be, as I have said, there will be an effect. It will lower the cost of production, and so therefore, the farm gate of palay will decrease.
I don't see the consistency. When you lower the cost of production, how will the farm gates decrease?
It is now a play of market forces, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor. So, with respect to the farm gate, there is a correlation between the cost of production. So, if the cost of production is lower, of course, we could not expect the farm gate to stay at this level. But then again, as I have said, there will be there will be support price coming from the NFA because the NFA is mandated to buy the palay produced from our farmers at twenty pesos per kilo, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpolator.
Are there empirical studies conducted by the appropriate agency of the government which would validate and document that statement that effectively there is no adverse effects on the farm gate of palay, even if we already have a regime of rice tarification?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpolator, I do not have with me any study that would provide empirical data on the effect of the prices, I mean, of the farm gate price of palay when we will be under a regime of tarification, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpolator.
Well, the distinguished sponsor, Mr. Speaker, said that he does not have the copy of that empirical study. But my question, is there an empirical study?
I believe, Mr. Speaker, a study was done by PIDS, but I do not have a copy with me.
When can we have a copy of that study? If ever there exists one?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpolator, may I request for at least 24 hours, and I will give a copy of that study to the distinguished interpolator?
The manifestation of the sponsor is noted.
In other words, pending the submission of that empirical study, we will have to defer any further action on this measure after the interpolations are terminated?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpolator, I have the copy with me now, and I can give it to the distinguished interpolator.
In essence, Mr. Sponsor, what does the empirical study point to? Or conclude?
Mr. Speaker, there is a part of this study, and I would like to read it into the record. It says that tariff revenues are expected to be around 27 billion to 28 billion during that period, from 2017 to 2022. Meanwhile, farm gate and retail prices are projected to decrease by 456 per kilo and six pesos, 6.97 per kilo, respectively.
Now, does the study say why the farm gate would decrease to that amount you have stated? Because that is important. It is not a mere statement, but it should be supported by empirical data.
Mr. Speaker, with the kind indulgence of the interpolator, I will have to consult with the PIDS for the data that they used in arriving at this conclusion.
Well, thank you for that commitment. Then we will await for the submission of that data before we approve this measure on second reading. Now, let me go to my next question. What will be the effect of rice tarification on the government's program on rice sufficiency?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpolator, as we have espoused a while ago, with under a regime of rice tarification, the Department of, I mean, the Department of Agriculture will not abandon the program on the rice sufficiency because, again, we should not depend on imported rice. But because any event that would happen in the global rice market would affect our rice industry if we depend on imported rice alone. And so therefore, even if we allow or we liberalize the entry of imported rice into our country, the Department of Agriculture would still support programs, plans, and programs for our rice sufficiency program, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpolator.
The question, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, is not whether or not the Department of Agriculture would abandon or continue the rice sufficiency program. Because I think it is important that the Department of Agriculture should pursue that rice sufficiency program. My question is, what is the effect of rice tarification on rice sufficiency? Will it be beneficial or will it be adverse? That is the question.
I believe, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, that with the advent of rice tarification, it will be beneficial for the plans and programs of the Department of Agriculture because at the end of the exercise, we should have an efficient and competitive rice farmer and rice sector, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpolator.
What is the basis for this distinguished sponsor saying that at the end of the exercise, we will have a more self-reliant rice partner, and rice sufficiency will be enhanced?
Because of the additional fund that would be given to the rice sector. So, aside from the plans and programs under the budget of the Department of Agriculture, we will have another source of fund specifically to be used for the rice sectors and rice farmers, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor.
Aside from the inherent negative geographical factor of the Philippines, what other factors derail the rice sufficiency program of the government for so many administrations already?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpolator, with respect to the rice program, it is very unfortunate that if we compare our situation from our neighbors, for example, India, Thailand, and Vietnam, the cost of production of palay in the Philippines is much higher than in our neighbors. And so therefore, we could not compete with our neighbors in terms of cost of production, in terms of yield, Mr. Speaker. Because in our case, if we compare hard labor, the contribution of hard labor to our cost of production is almost four pesos as compared to Thailand, which is sixty-six centavos, and to Vietnam, forty-six centavos. And with this alone, for the labor, it is almost thirty percent of the cost of production. So, if we could mechanize, then we could decrease the cost component of hard labor through mechanization, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpolator.
That study referred to by the distinguished sponsor indicates that the cost of production of palay in the Philippines compared to India, Vietnam, and Thailand is principally due to the geographical factor. Because in India, Japan, and Thailand, there are vast plains of lands suitable to rice production. Moreover, they have big rivers which would give irrigation year in and year out to farmlands. But that is not the point I was asking for because I said, aside from the inherent geographical disadvantages of the Philippines, what other causes derail the rice production of this country which has been pursued by practically all administrations?
Unfortunately, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpolator, one of the main reasons maybe is the lack of appropriate funding from the government. Because as it is now, if we compare the budget of our agriculture sector from the other departments, our agriculture sector is only receiving around, in 2018, around fifty billion pesos, Mr. Speaker. And from this budget, only ten billion is allocated for the rice sector. So, with a meager budget of ten billion, I would not, I believe, that even if we wanted to expedite or to speed up our rice self-sufficiency program, the amount of budget or appropriated for the rice sector is not enough, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpolator.
In other words, one of the principal factors would be deficiency or lack of funding to support the policy of the Department of Agriculture to achieve rice sufficiency. And considering that we are now, again, And considering that we are now again in the budget season, I think it is relevant to again review the budget being allocated to the Department of Agriculture so that it should be increased or enhanced so that we will be able to pursue this program on rice production sufficiency. Aside from lack of funding, do you think that lack of incentives to farmers will also contribute to the failure of the rice sufficiency program?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished Interpolator, I believe also that the lack of sufficient, I mean, the incentive given to our rice sector is one of the reasons.
Then what incentives should be granted or give to our rice farmers so that they can help in the government's program on achieving rice sufficiency?
Well, in the forms of input subsidy, in the form of crop finance, in the form of hybrid seeds and in the form of subsidizing crop insurance, Mr. Speaker, distinguished Interpolator. I believe those things would be good incentive, incentives to be given to our rice farmers.
When you say distinguished sponsor, that the incentive should be crop insurance, more input subsidy, that would include fertilizers, et cetera, all of this would require funding?
Yes, distinguished Interpolator.
In other words, what is really required is adequate funding for the Department of Agriculture. And most probably, earnest and sincere efforts on the agencies concerned to really pursue that program of rice sufficiency. Now, let me go to another question. Under the regime of rice tarification, does the government still retain the power to control the volume of imports?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished Interpolator, under the section... That power and authority is given to the president, Mr. Speaker, distinguished Interpolator, that in the event of... That in the event of there is, I mean, an increase or surge in volume or in prices, the president has the power and authority to adjust the applied rate or, number two, to temporarily regulate or restrict the volume of imported rice for a temporary period.
In other words, even with the regime of rice import tarification, we still have the visages of the quantitative restriction policy. Because the volume of rice imports could still be subject to the control and restriction of the government through the president. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, distinguished Interpolator.
Now, talking about the president and his powers under this bill. Mr. Speaker, can the distinguished sponsor enumerate the various powers of the president under the regime of rice tarification?
Under section nine, Mr. Speaker, distinguished Interpolator, it provides that in order to fulfill the objective of the law, to safeguard the Filipino farmers, consumers and the national interest, the president is hereby empowered to act with full delegated authority in the following circumstances. A, the adjustment of applied rate. In the interest of the general welfare and national security, the president, upon the recommendation of the NFA Council, may increase, reduce, revise or adjust existing rates of import duty, including any necessary change in the classification applicable to the importation of rice. The power herein delegated to the president as provided for in above paragraphs shall be exercised only when the Congress is not in session. Any order issued by the president adjusting the applied tariff rates shall take effect 15 days after publication. In the event of any imminent or forecasted shortage or such other situation requiring government intervention, the president is empowered for a limited period of time and/or for a specified volume to allow the importation of rice at a lower applied tariff rate to address the situation. Such orders shall take effect immediately and may be issued even when Congress is in session. And that would be the regulation of rice exports. Whenever there is a critical shortage in the supply of rice and there is urgent need to act, as certified by the NFA Council, the president may temporarily regulate the export of rice for a limited period of time. And under section 10, under special rice safeguard, it provides that in order to protect the Philippine rice industry from sudden or extreme price fluctuations and/or unexpected surges of import of the volume of rice, the president may, following a recommendation from the NFA Council, impose temporary regulations or restrictions on the volume of imports of rice for a temporary period through the imposition of a rice safeguard tariff sufficient in level to address the situation. Within 90 days, upon the effective of this act, the NFA Council shall issue such rules and regulations as may be necessary to implement these special rice safeguard provisions. And under section 11, the president, in the interest of the Philippine rice industry as well as Philippine consumers, may, upon the recommendation of the NEDA and the DA, enter into trade negotiations or renegotiations of the country's international trade commitments on rice. Mr. Speaker, distinguished Interpolator.
Those are vast powers granted to the chief executive. And under section 9A, that would even replicate for a time being the provisions of this bill once it becomes a law, when Congress is not in session. Now, even if Congress is in session, the president can still exercise some powers with respect to the rice tarification and the volume of rice importation and to answer any expected or imminent shortages. Even if Congress is in session, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, distinguished Interpolator. That in the event of any imminent or forecasted shortages or such other situation requiring government intervention, the president is empowered for a limited period of time and/or a specified volume to allow the importation of rice at a lower applied tariff rate. Such orders shall take effect immediately and may be issued even when Congress is in session. So this power is granted to the president when there is an imminent shortage or forecasted shortage of rice. Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor.
Who has the authority to say that there is an imminent or forecasted shortage of rice?
It would be the NFA Council, Mr. Speaker.
It does not say here. So most probably, we should be able to make a necessary amendment to say that it should be the NFA Council who should make that forecast.
The sponsor is amenable at the proper time, Mr. Speaker, to make that as an amendment.
Then also, we should delimit the period on the effectiveness of the president's declaration. Because here, that declaration is being made while Congress is in session. As a matter of fact, I think we should be able to study whether there is any constitutional infirmity in its particular provision, because Congress is in session. So I would submit that the sponsoring committee make a study whether this particular provision is free from constitutional infirmity. Now, this provision under section nine also talks of critical shortage in the supply of rice. I was under the impression that we are adopting the policy of rice tarification and abandoning the regime of quantitative restriction because we would like to assure that there is sufficient rice supply. Is that correct, Mr. Sponsor?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished Interpolator, yes, that is one of the objective of this measure. Unfortunately, we could not control events outside of our jurisdiction. For example, in the global trading of rice, the total number of, I mean, the total rice traded globally is around 39.5 million metric tons. And 38 million metric tons has already been committed to buyers. So in effect, there is only about 2 million metric tons free for trading. And the imminent danger, Mr. Speaker, for a possible shortage or imminent shortage is when China starts to buy. Number two, the effect of climate change. And number three, when suddenly our rice exporting neighbors, for example, India, Vietnam and Thailand, make some legislations prohibiting the importation of their rice. Oh, I mean, the exportation of their rice. Then with that, there will be imminent danger of rice shortage even if we are already under the regime of rice tarification. Mr. Speaker, distinguished Interpolator.
Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, in other words, the regime of rice tarification is not an assurance of the adequate supply of rice because it is subjected to external factors beyond the control of the republic. Is that correct?
I fully agree, Mr. Speaker, distinguished Interpolator.
Now, during the regime of quantitative restriction, what was the annual volume of rice importation by the country?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished Interpolator, from 1996, the total imported, I mean, arrivals of rice arrivals into the Philippines is about 893,654 metric tons. And in 1997, 733,380,000 metric tons. And in 1998, 2,126,530 metric tons. In 1999, 833,148 metric tons. In year 2000, 631,640 metric tons. In 2001, we imported 656,067 metric tons. And in 2002, 1,190,205 metric tons. And in 2003, 875,750 metric tons. In 2004, 886,801 metric tons. And in 2005, 1,783,342 metric tons. In 2006, 1.6 million metric tons. In 2007, 1.8 million metric tons. In 2008, 2.2 million 390,000 metric tons. In 2009, 1,842 metric tons. In 2010, 2,369 metric tons. In 2011, 940,000 metric tons. In 2012, 815,470 metric tons. In 2013, 345,662 metric tons. In 2014, 1,700 metric tons. In 2015, 1,900 metric tons. In 2016, 681,000 metric tons. And in 2017, 916,000 metric tons.
Or an average of how many metric tons of imported rice?
Of about 1 million metric tons, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor.
Now, under the regime of rice tarification, what is the expected volume of rice imports annually?
Under the regime of rice tarification, we are expecting an average influx of imported rice of about 1.2 million metric tons, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor.
So there is really no much difference under the regime of quantitative restriction and under the policy of rice tarification? So what are we talking about? Principally, really, it's because we are not anymore interested in seeking an extension of the quantitative restriction, not because rice tarification is superior to quantitative restriction as a policy. Is that correct?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, I would like to recast my previous answer that the 1.2 million metric tons is based on the assumption that we will provide enough, I mean, the adequate subsidy to the 57 provinces that produce rice. However, without the subsidy, we will be importing about 2 million metric tons of rice, Mr. Speaker, distinguished Interpolator.
That would also...
In that case, in that case, we will be doubling the volume of imported rice coming into the country.
Okay. Well, I wonder what is the empirical basis of such projection? But I suppose that should also include the increase in the population of the country. Because by year end, the Population Commission said that we will, the population would balloon to 105 million Filipinos. But there are other factors to consider. Not because the tarification is superior to quantitative restriction, but some other factors would have to be taken into consideration. Now, let me go to another question, Mr. Speaker. What is the effect of rice tarification on the smuggling of rice?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter, as I have said earlier, the case of smuggling is a different sphere. Because as far as the, I mean, the tarification is concerned, my belief is that there is there will be no effect on the sphere of smuggling, because the objective of tarification and smuggling is on the opposite. Because in tarification, we will tariff rice importation. But in smuggling, the smugglers don't pay tariff or duty. So, I would not think that the, under a regime of, I mean, the regime of tarification would have an effect on the price smuggling, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor.
Well, I think there should be an empirical study on the effect of rice tarification on the, on smuggling of rice. Because it would be easier for smuggled rice to enter the country with a liberalized importation policy as smugglers take advantage of the arrival of rice imports. I think that factor should be studied, because it could be a reality. We expect rice smuggling to worsen if price tarification will push through, because more private traders are allowed to import, resulting to the flooding of imported rice and making the monitoring of rice imports more difficult, including smuggling. So, there would be an effect on smuggling of rice with the liberalization of importation. I think that should be considered and should be studied very well by the proper agency. Now, can we again, can the distinguished sponsor again enumerate the safety nets or safeguards protective of our rice farmers under this bill?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter, aside from Section 9, Section 10, and Section 11, and Section 15, under Rice Competitiveness Enhancement Fund, which provided for the usage of the fund for rice, I mean, for the benefit of the rice farmers, there are no other provisions specifically provided for the protection of the rice farmers.
Don't you think, distinguished sponsor, that there should be more safety nets, more safeguards to protect the rice farmers in this bill other than those already included? So much so that in the period of amendment, we should be able to introduce the necessary requisite safeguards?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter, if the interpreter has proposed amendments, then the sponsor would gladly consider them on the right time, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter.
Since my time is about to expire, just like the quantitative restrictions, let me go to my, to the last aspect of my interpolation. Under Section 6 of the bill, the National Food Authority Council is sought to be reconstituted. Is that correct?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter, under Section 6, yes, Mr. Speaker, the NFA Council, the membership of the NFA Council shall be reconstituted, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter.
So in other words, in this bill, we are amending the charter of the NFA. Is that correct?
Mr. Speaker, under PD, I mean, the NFA Council was originally constituted under the, I mean, Presidential Decree Number 4. And under this particular bill, we are amending the composition of the NFA Council.
Correct. But presidential decrees, like Presidential Decree Number 170, 1770 on the National Grains Authority, which is now the NFA, is a legitimate legislative issuance, no less than the transitory provisions of the 1987 Constitution would provide for that. Now, if that is so, my question is, can this bill by itself amend a legislative charter granted to the NFA? Will that be constitutional? Would that defy the prohibition that no bill should include more than two subject matters? So much so that there is a need to amend the charter of the NFA? Because under this bill, there is the, there are inclusions which are not found in Presidential Decree Number 1770. Like for example, the inclusion in the membership of the NFA Council of the NEDA, the DSWD, the DILG, the National Disaster Risk Reduction Management Council, and two farmer representatives. So effectively, this bill amends a legislative charter granted to the NFA, which I think we cannot do without violating the Constitution. Earlier this morning, we had a bicameral conference committee on the Cocoa Levy Trust Fund. And there was an attempt to amend the composition of the PCA, the Philippine Coconut Authority. And we resisted that. Because there should be a separate bill to amend a legislative charter. I think that is the proper way, rather than amending the NFA Council in this bill. Would you agree to that proposition, Mr. Speaker, distinguished gentleman?
I would gladly agree with the proposition of the distinguished interpreter, Mr. Speaker. And the sponsor would gladly accept any amendment for that matter, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter.
The amendment should be a deletion of Section 6?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Well, I, yeah. I now terminate my interpolation with the reservation that the documents and empirical study I was asking be given to this representation the soonest possible time. And we should be allowed time to formulate our amendments. Because this is a very important measure, and we should not approve it in haste. Because haste would make imperfect laws or statutes. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, distinguished sponsor, for accommodating my interpolation.
Thank you, distinguished interpreter.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, for his interpolation, I move that we recognize the Honorable Victor Yap of the Second District of Tarlac. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Congressman Yap is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Would the gentleman sponsor, a party mate, would be amenable to some questions?
I would gladly accept to clarifications of espoused by the distinguished interpreter, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, I'd like to make this very brief, times of the essence. And a lot of us have missed our dinner meal. But I can't help the fact that in passing, this is very important act, one that is of priority to this government and future governments. I'd like to raise some points or manifest some points that I think may help clarify certain matters or hopefully would add to, if it is meritorious in improving the bill some more. At this point, do you think, since it is, this bill is, pertains to a very political product, rice or palay, do you think that certain situations would apply that management tools and economics could help the government in improving this bill?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter, we have already conducted several committee meetings, technical working groups, and we have already invited all the stakeholders in the rice sector. And we believe that with all the propositions, counterpropositions of the stakeholders and from our agencies, which are involved in the rice sector, we believe that all the propositions were already incorporated in the crafting of this bill. However, if the gentleman from Tarlac would introduce some points or some proposals for the refinement or improvement of the bill, then this, I mean, the sponsor will be willing to consider, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My point would be on the safe side of any government. I believe that tarification would be a, perhaps a better medium having had the regime of quantitative restriction, not really up to this point that farmers are still in, you know, in a position that still poor, lagging behind. And at the same time, inflation is now a very timely, timely problem for the nation. So it's always been a debate between consumers and producers. Would you say that this bill, where would an administration put itself? Does it really go pro-farmer or pro-producer? Or does it go to, it protects the farmer from the middleman or vis-a-vis the consumer as well? Or does it go to prioritizing the entire country being more sensitive to inflation rather than the prices of palay?
As I have said earlier, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter, whether we are in the regime of quantitative restrictions or in the regime of rice tarification, first and foremost, of course, is the protection of the interest of the Filipino rice farmers and rice consumers, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter.
Then you would say that an administration can always be burdened or hostage by a double-edged sword? Because I would probably say that the producers would always lambaste the government because there's always an incentive to do so because, at the same time, it protects the prices. But the end in point may be a situation wherein, like now, prices of rice is too high and the pockets of the businessman get bigger. Especially that tarification would lead us into a situation of more forces of demand and supply, right? Market forces, we're yielding to market forces. So, wouldn't this be something that would lead the government or future governments into a situation where it can't win? In that matter, Mr. Speaker, my point is that I think it would be wise, as sponsor and as co-author of this bill, that we indicate a situation or a price point, a nominal, or I'm rather, a real price point at this point of our prices of palay or rice in our country. And this will protect either way, the administration, the consumer, and the producer, as a reference point in the future wherein situations, as mentioned by previous speakers, have, may happen and will always be there to happen.
The, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter, the only price reference point we have now is the support, I mean, the buying price, supported or the support buying price of palay from the NFA, which is 20 pesos per kilo. Other than that price, everything is now controlled by market forces.
Correct. I think you are referring to a price point that supports both sides. And I think that is the price that I am referring to, that will be more formalized as a reference price when prices of tariff are considered in the council or in the president's, you know. I come from a sensitive agricultural province for rice in Tarlac. For the many past years, I've become a governor for nine years. I'm afraid, Mr. Speaker, that the future administrations will always be hostage to certain forces. There is always an incentive for the producers to say and demand. At the same time, sa kanila rin pupunta a bigger part of the subsidy. So I'm not saying any price point, but I commend our good secretary. but I commend our good secretary. At this point, doon po sa amin sa Tarlac, masaya ang rice farmers ngayon. Maganda ang handling niyo, dahil nakokontrol niyo siguro ngayon ang supply or ang tamang supply, kasi ang customs nakikipagkooperate sa inyo. But we will never know the future, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Chairman. Ina-kailangan natin magkaroon at habang ngayon maganda ang price point, pwedeng ito ang gamitin ng inyong nagsasangguli na itong bill na doon na maipasa para magkaroon ng reference. And I do this, Mr. Speaker, for the good of this administration as well as future administrations. So if I may, Mr. Sponsor, can this be part of an amendment that...
The, if the distinguished interpreter would propose any amendment, then the sponsor would consider that on the proper time.
Thank you. Last, one more point. Maybe I believe that there is enough research and analysis as you said, rice is the most important product that we consume. And do you have a study, more or less, that calculates why our rice is not competitive or burdensome to both producers and even those who consume it? For one way or another, I believe that at this point, our executive branch as well as our researchers should have come up with a list of the reasons why hindi competitive and priced ang palae all the way to the rice.
Well, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter, we have a study show, I mean indicating benchmarking of Philippine rice economy vis-à-vis our competitors. And with respect to the production cost of rice per kilogram, in the Philippines, our cost per, our cost of production per kilogram is 12 pesos and 41 centavos. This is way high if we compare it to our neighbors like India, Thailand, and Vietnam. Because in India, the cost of production per kilogram of rice is only 8.87, in Thailand is 8.85, and in Vietnam, 6.53. This, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter, is a confluence of several factors. One is the geographical location. Because in Thailand, Vietnam, they have the Mecon River and a vast tract of land suitable for rice. But in our case, in the Philippines, 30% of our cost, I mean, that contributes to the cost of production is hard labor. Meaning, we are lagging behind our neighbors in terms of mechanization because we, as it is now, are resorting to manual labor, Mr. Speaker. And the other factor is the amount of the rent of our land. The amount of land rent is about 2 pesos and 11 centavos. So for hard labor alone and land rent, it's 6 pesos already. And that is 50% of the total cost of production. So if we cannot address this issue, we could not be as competitive as Thailand and Vietnam and India in terms of cost of production of per kilo of palae.
In the bill, there is a mention of a roadmap of our strategy towards agriculture. Would you say that at this point in time, as a nation, as a country, and as our experts would see and deem it, that mechanization is a great part of that additional cost that you have mentioned? I don't recall the exact percentage or amount.
30%.
Would you say that that is the greatest cost why we are costly in terms of producing rice, palae?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter. Because if we compare labor in our, with our neighbors, in Vietnam, hard labor is only 46 centavos. And in Thailand, it is only 66 centavos. And in the Philippines, hard labor represents 3.76 pesos. So we are way, way up in terms of hard labor. So in the drafting of the roadmap, mechanization is one of the focus, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter.
Now, through the years, 'yung mechanization na 'yan, talaga ang inasahan ng mga farmers. Eto bang tarification na 'to? Huwag naman sana sumobra. Pero kung doon sa nakikitaan 'yung volumes, doon sa nakikitaan 'yung dapat na taripa, talaga bang masusolusyonan 'yung mechanization on this point? Ako, naniniwala ako. 25 years ago, part, a great part, the reason why some of our beloved countrymen are poor, remain to be poor because of underemployment in agriculture. And mechanization somehow would push these people towards more permanent job opportunities, hopefully, if this country manages to do so. Sa tingin mo ba, Mr. Sponsor, na 'yung inyong kalkulasyon at nilagay dito, ay talaga maadress?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter. Because doon po sa utilization ng Rice Competitiveness Enhancement Fund, na kung saan dito lahat pupunta 'yung malilikom na taripa, 20% ng total na pondo ay specifically pupunta sa pambili o pantulong ng farm equipment at mechanization sa ating mga magsasaka.
Hindi pa ako governor, I think vice mayor pa lang ako. And I naririnig ko eh. After 30 years, sa tingin mo ba may pagbabago? Lalo na nagmahal na 'yung mga equipments, tumasan dollar. Eh, paano ba talaga magkakasya 'yan? 'Yan ba talaga? Eh, meron tayong inaasahan bago? Or I would rather pose my question, have there been initiatives? Especially now, we claim pagbabago. Meron ba na talaga nabago doon sa approach kung paano tayo makapagmechanize? Or meron bang existing na naiisip ang ating executive department in terms of utilizing the mechanization, 'yung approach? Kasi, 'yung dating sinasabi na 'yan, bugui pa ako, 'yan na 'yung sinasabi nun. Hanggang ngayon, wala pa ring inasenso.
Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter, ang kagandahan po dito sa bill na ito, pag nagimbatas ito, is magkakaroon po ng dagdag pondo ang Department of Agriculture. Kasi, as of now, out of the 50 or 60 billion budget ng Department of Agriculture, only 10 billion goes to rice sector. Eh, pag, pag the... 8.9 billion lang pala ang pupunta sa rice sector. At pag po naipasa natin itong bill na ito, magkakaroon po tayo ng koleksyon sa mga taripa ng papasok na bigas. At ito po, ay gagamitin, pantulong sa ating mga magsasaka. At dito nga po, isa sa mga nakasaad dito is 'yung farm equipment and farm mechanization. At 'yun nga, I was talking to the good secretary of the Department of Agriculture, is meron naman silang mga programa dapat dito sa farm equipment and mechanization. Kaya lang, hanggang programa na lang, dahil wala namang karampatang pondo. So pag may pondo, maaring magawa o maging ganap na 'yung pangarap ng ating secretary of the Department of Agriculture para maadress itong pagbibigay o paggiging mechanized na ng ating mga farmers.
Salamat, Mr. Sponsor. Pero siguro hindi naman sa pakikiilam or pagimasok, pwede ba ako mag-suggest na?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter, as I have said, the sponsor is very open for considering all the proposals coming from the distinguished interpreter. And such a proposal for amendment or any improvement for this bill should be espoused at the proper time when, at the period of amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Sponsor. Mr. Speaker, I would like to manifest na ganun na nasabi, baka pwedeng tignan ng ating executive department na para meron namang pagbabago siguro sa approach na mechanization sapagkat kung talaga aasahan natin ang ating labor, pupunta sa mga industriya at serbisyo. At ang agriculture, lilitang populasyon, at doon lamang mangyayari 'yun talagang productivity at bumabay 'yung presyo. Pero dahil nag-iimport pa tayo, halos lahat na nakita akong bansang umasenso sa agriculture ay gumagawa na sarili nila mga farm equipments. Sana, panahon na, itong oras na 'to, eh gamitin na rin natin siguro strategy ng China na magkaroon talaga ng isang kompanya na malaki, magtechnology transfer dito. Total, may tariff naman tayo, at wala na sila ipasok na kapital at magamit naman 'yan. Ang gusto ko lamang, Mr. Speaker, may exhaust 'yung mga ibang paraan, paano tayong umasenso sa larangan na 'to. At maging specific naman sana ang pagbanggit. Dahil pag pumasan na 'to ng ganitoro, pagdating na naman doon sa council at doon sa eksekutibo at doon sa mga ibang branches, nawawala 'yung mga ganitong klaseng mga pananaw, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Sponsor. Thank you for indulging.
Thank you, distinguished interpreter.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there have been no other members who wish us to interpolate our sponsor. I move that we, that we close, terminate the period of sponsorship and debate. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair hearing none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, move that we suspend consideration of House Bill Number 7735. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair hearing none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader. Session suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we include as additional co-authors of bills and resolutions that are pending in various committees, the members appearing in the list to be submitted by the Committee on Rules after due verification of their requests for inclusion as co-author of such bills and resolutions.
Any objection?
So move, Mr. Speaker.
The Chair hearing none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. We leave of the House. I move that we set the commencement of the daily sessions of the House at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, starting Monday, August 6, 2018.
Any objection? The Chair hearing none. The motion is approved.
Likewise, Speaker, we leave of the House. Would like to present for approval the concurrent, House Concurrent Resolution Number 19. And we direct the Secretary General to read the said resolution.
Any objection? The Chair hearing none. The motion is approved.
House Concurrent Resolution Number 19, Concurrent Resolution Providing for the Legislative Calendar for the Third Regular Session of the 17th Congress of the Philippines.
Majority Leader.
Yes, Speaker, I move that we adopt the said resolution.
Any objection? The Chair hearing none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, on part of the majority, with the resignation of Chairman Arnel T, we would like to elect on the part of the majority, Congressman Rodrigo Abellanosa as chairman of the Committee on Natural Resources.
Any objection? The Chair hearing none. The motion is approved.
Likewise, Speaker, on the part of the majority, with the resignation of Congressman Roger Mercado from the majority, instead, we would like to elect on the part of the majority, Congressman Vicente Veloso for the Committee on Constitutional Amendments. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair hearing none. The motion is approved.
Speaker, at this point in time, I move to adjourn till 3 o'clock, Monday, August 6. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair hearing none. The motion is approved.